If we could welcome Bishop John Miller from Christ Church for the invocation, please.
Mayor and councilpersons, thank you for this opportunity to pray this afternoon as you conduct business here in Vero Beach. Father God, we thank you for this time of the year in which we're reminded of the many blessings that you bestow upon us. Help us to acknowledge them with grateful and humble hearts. Lord, we thank you for our lives. We thank you for the liberties we enjoy in this country. We thank you for this location, this beautiful city of Vero Beach, Florida. Father God, I would pray that you would bestow upon these council members wisdom and discernment this and every day as they work faithfully and efficiently to guide and direct this city of Vero Beach. Lord, let them know that you are near, that you care, and that it's your desire that they would serve not only the people of this city, but they would serve you to the honor and the glory of your name and for the sake of the one who died for us, that is Jesus, that we might all have eternal life in him. This we pray in his name. Amen.
Amen. Val Zedans, if you would lead us in pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good afternoon, everyone. Bring this November 20th meeting of the Vero Beach City Council to order. Tammy, if you could do roll call, please.
Dr. Zedans.
Here.
Colonel Young.
Here.
Councilwoman Moss.
Present.
Vice Mayor Sykes.
Present.
Mayor Howell.
Also present. For the approval of the minutes from last meeting, any changes to the minutes?
I have none.
No. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval. Second.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Agenda additions, deletions, and adoption. I do have a few changes to today's meeting. One is that because we have guests here from down south under the City Manager Matters, number 8B subsections 1, 2, and 3, we could move that to just before public comment. I would appreciate it. Tammy, I believe you had a request for a change?
Yes, sir. Removal of item 3E2, Mr. Richard Lewis to speak on the Rees Across America. He will come back to your next meeting and talk about that.
Okay. Motion to approve those changes?
I'll second.
Right. Any other changes?
I don't have any.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Move on to proclamations and recognitions by council. First, number one, Rep. Palmer Day.
Rep. Palmer, come on up to the microphone, please. Proclamation. Whereas Mr. Rep. Palmer was born on November 21st, 1953, in Poughkeepsie, New York, whereas Mr. Palmer began his entertainment career singing, playing the guitar, writing songs in coffeehouses throughout upstate New York, and whereas Mr. Palmer enjoyed words and music so much, he formed The Jingle Company, which became a full-service advertising agency, Rep. Palmer Productions, in Albany, New York. Whereas Mr. Palmer's successes during this period include a national jingle for the American Red Cross, nationally aired work for the American Lung Association, a jingle for Grandma's Pies -- I want to hear that one -- and two Gold Addy Awards. And whereas, at age 29, Mr. Palmer moved on to become a gospel singer, singing in churches up and down the East Coast of the United States. Whereas Mr. Palmer also has a strong belief in our country and performed onstage at military installations, including appearance at West Point, which led him to be dubbed Patriotic Palmer, which earned him an invitation to sing at Holman Stadium on July 4th, 1994. And because of his performances, he was asked to appear as a guest on a local radio show. And whereas, after appearing on the show, the station manager asked him to do a show one day a week for one hour, which was the start of his career as the mayor of the airwaves. Now therefore, the Vero Beach City Council hereby extend our birthday wishes to Mr. Palmer on his 65th birthday and offer our sincere congratulations on Mr. Palmer's 25 years in radio.
Thank you. I had no idea why I was coming here today, so they kept it a secret until now, so.
Do you want to say anything?
I'd just like to say thank you very much. I'm sure I've aggravated each one of you in your own way at times, but I think that the Lord knows and somewhere in the recesses of your heart, you know, I love people and no matter what I have against them, I'd give a kidney if they needed it. And that goes for all of you and all of you, too. This town's been very kind, so, thank you.
Happy birthday.
Put your hand up. Historic Photograph Panels Exhibit Proclamation to Jose Conrada.
If Mr. Conrada's here, please come on up. Thank you, sir. The proclamation reads, "Whereas the city of Vero Beach is celebrating its important 100th anniversary, and whereas historic awareness is an effective measure for fostering civic pride and respect, illustrating individual community character and its relatable to people of every age, walk of life, and diverse backgrounds, and whereas individuals' efforts are made to celebrate and preserve Vero Beach's timeline in a way that honors the city's legacy in the great state of Florida, and whereas seeing these efforts of success is meritorious and deserves the distinction of special honor, now therefore, the City Council, the city of Vero Beach, Florida, and the City of Vero Beach Historic Preservation Commission does hereby recognize Mr. Jose Conrada, owner of McDonald's located at 1925 US-1 Vero Beach, Florida, for his outstanding and professionally archived and publicly displayed historic photograph panels exhibit. This important contribution serves to inform and inspire every positive measure that historic awareness brings, and we ask the community to join us as we express our gratitude."
Thank you. I just want to mention to Laura earlier that we're very honored. We love Vero Beach. We're doing visits in Vero Beach. This is my wife, Mary Ann.
Nice to meet you.
She's the main force behind everything that you see out there in the stores, so we also have a son that works with us and his wife, so we're truly a family affair. And we're truly honored to be here today to receive this. I have a lot of friends in the council and my friend from Rotary, my good friend, John. Thank you so much. And Tammy, thank you.
It's very well deserved. I met your wife, I met Mrs. Conrada at a Habitat for Humanity event. I know you were there for the community, and I want to thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
It's much appreciated.
He's also a major supporter of the police department, and we do appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for that.
And obviously, I'm very proud of being part of the city and very appreciative of the support the city gives us as council, the police department, and a lot of other things. Thank you very much.
I just also want to highlight for the community, the work that you did for recognizing our history of this town is phenomenal, and what you do every day to contribute back to this, to the community, is really, really appreciated, and thank you so much.
Yeah.
And I do want to say, and I know these meetings are very long, so very quickly, I was at
a Indian River State College Foundation meeting with Alma Lee Loy, and we sat together. And back 10 years ago, I had the vision in my mind, and I asked her to help me with it, and she got her, Clem Cooper, and they all put their heads together, and they came up with the display that you see today, so kudos to them. Without them, I wouldn't have been able to do it. Thank you so much.
Fantastic.
Thank you so much. Thank you for everything you do.
I have to say one thing to those of you who have not experienced this gallery, because it truly is. If you are going to the window and getting your coffee and your McMuffin, you are missing out. You need to dine in one more time. It's a fast food meal. You can get a hundred years of history. And think of the volume, think of the people in there every day.
Who's going to take the photograph?
That's right. You're in charge of the photographs.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Giving Tuesday, November 27, 2018. Councilwoman Moss, please.
Yes, is Ashley Novater here? Please come forward if you wish. And this is a proclamation for HALO. That's H-A-L-O. Whereas HALO Rescues Shelter is a 501(c)(3) organization with its mission to create a no-kill, safe haven for abused and abandoned animals in Indian River County. And whereas HALO will be participating in a global movement known as Giving Tuesday, which was created as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving to encourage people to serve others throughout this holiday season and during other times of the year. And whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism where people give whatever they are able. And whereas it is fitting and proper on Giving Tuesday and on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Vero Beach. And now therefore, the City Council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, does hereby proclaim November 27, 2018, as quotes, "Giving Tuesday" in the city of Vero Beach to encourage all citizens to join HALO and other nonprofits to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers. I'm Ashley, and this is Margaret. We're here from HALO. The founder and director, Jackie Patron, couldn't be here tonight, so we are here in her stead. I just really want to thank you guys for your support of nonprofits in our community. We have the shelter up in Sebastian and out at the mall here, and we're just really excited to be part of Giving Tuesday this year, so you have Thanksgiving, Black Friday, Cyber Monday, and Giving Tuesday, so that's a great time for everyone to give back to the community, and we are just really excited to be a part of that, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Let me just say this, that you all do such a fantastic job. I mean, you really all, I mean, I'm talking about the whole staff. You work your fingers to the bone, and you do a wonderful thing for our community. And I've been a longtime supporter of your group, I will continue to be, and my sincere thanks to you for all that hard work.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Thank you. Good to see you all. Thank you. Have a good night. Happy Thanksgiving. Okay, we're going to, we've made a change to the agenda. Actually, I'm sorry, Jeff, I didn't forget about you. I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. We have no staff or consultants, special reports, but we do a presentation. That's going to be from Mr. Jeff Francisco. I've just had the pleasure of meeting him in the last few weeks. He's with United Against Poverty, and he's here to speak about, on the Advancing Cities Challenge Grant. Mr. Francisco, nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too, Harry. Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers, for letting me share with this, with you today. I just got here, like, six weeks ago, so most of you may know more about my organization than even I do, but I am, Jenny and Austin Hunt started United Against Poverty. Back then, it was, it was the harvest food outreach, and in 2016, we changed our name to United Against Poverty because it says more about what we do. But we've had an opportunity recently to deepen our service to the community. We just bought a building, the old SFS Distribution Center over on US-1. We purchased it in June and paid cash for it, and we're 70% through raising the money for this. And, you know, just real quickly, while we exist, poverty remains a pretty serious issue in Vero Beach, and we are structured to meet those needs. We're designed to offer a hand-up, not a handout. We offer member grocery service to folks, and we also, more importantly, we have a step program that teaches folks how to get back on their feet and ultimately get them jobs. Last year alone, we had 98 people that were in poverty when they came to us, and today they're not. And, I mean, if we can, if we can increase that and continue to do that every year, we think that's a big ripple in the community. Our purpose is to inspire and empower those in poverty to achieve economic self-sufficiency, and that's our, that's our number-one outcome. That's how we measure success, is economic self-sufficiency of the folks that come to us. All right, so as I said, we just purchased a building, and the reason is that we're at full capacity right now in the facilities that we have there on US-1, and we're only meeting 14% of the need as it exists. So we knew to expand that, we would have to have better and larger facilities. We had this opportunity to come up. We purchased this building literally across the street from where we are now. When we get in there later this summer, it will, it will allow us to triple the number of folks that we serve in our step program. It'll allow us to double the member share grocery capacity, and we'll also be able to improve our wraparound services to our members and clients through our collaborations that we'll be able to have in the building, just simply because it's larger. We have lots of collaborations planned throughout the city. We actually paid cash for the building. It's paid for. We closed on it in June. We're in the quiet phase of Phase 2, which is the retrofit for the building. We raised 2.7 million. We're 70% there, and the total cost of the project, as you can see, is 6.6 million. So that's kind of the background. The reason I'm here today is because we have an opportunity for a grant from JP Morgan Chase that we're uniquely positioned for. They've put up $500 million for a five-year initiative to invest in solutions in communities all around the country. It breaks down to about 166 awards of $3 million each. They would like for a nonprofit to lead the charge on it, which is, we're picking up that baton, and what they're looking for is people, organizations, or cities, really, it's a citywide thing, where we, there's, they see clear collaboration between cities, public, private, and nonprofit. So we feel like that we, I mean, that's our everyday business that we do, so we feel like we're in a really good situation to apply for this grant. And as you see there, our, the new center that we're building is a collaborative center for resources. Two of the things that they're most interested in in this grant is employment security and access to services. That's what we do every day, and it's going to allow us to increase that and the collaboration. And due to the money we've raised already and the people that support us every day in this unbelievable community, we have strong private sector backing already in place. And the reason I'm here today is I just would like a letter of support. One of the things that they ask for in the grant application is a letter of support from your, from your city and your community, so I'm here to ask the councilmembers for that letter of support.
Mr. Francisco, would you maybe tell council about the fact that you've already been to the county commissioners with this?
Yes, yeah, so, yeah, so county commissioners have already pledged their support and given us a letter, and we're also working really closely with Indian River State College as a partner in this grant as well.
I've taken a tour, actually, years ago, and also participated in a survey. I was invited to participate in a survey, and that was probably a year or more ago. And I have to say to the community, I'm very impressed because actually what he said is what happens. They don't just give people things, they help raise people up, they teach them job skills, and even just the basics of finding a job, things that we might take for granted. They're very, very helpful with all of that, and I think, I think it's a wonderful place, and, you know, I'm happy to lend my support.
Thank you.
Just speaking for myself.
Yeah, I'm totally in favor, too, and the, I was, I attended your open house. You just had a.
Oh, great, at the new building.
At the new building, a couple weeks ago, and it's going to be an incredible opportunity. And I really like the organization because of, it really does help people, and what the food, the food, it's like a, it's like a real grocery store when you go in there. I've done the tour of the current facilities. This is going to be phenomenal. They have all these freezers back, or fridges and fridges backloaded, so they're, they're going to be able to come in, and it's going to be for people, and people go in and they're getting a significant discount off the regular food rates. They have fresh produce, things like that, so that a lot of health issues are related to a poor diet, actually, and this is going to help with that. They, I think you even do, like, cooking classes. I know there's going to be a, in the new building, they're going to have enough room to do some primary care, kind of urgent care things for people who need to do work, physicals, education, and they have classrooms there for education where you actually can go in and learn how to do an interview, how to, and you actually have coaches assigned to you to actually help you in your career after you get a job, maintaining a job. And the retention rate that you presented was pretty phenomenal. These people, not only are they getting jobs, people who were in poverty, they're keeping their jobs over time. And so it's really just, if you're looking for somewhere to do philanthropy that makes a difference, that actually affects people's lives, this is one of the best philanthropies we have in our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Val. Thank you. Anything else?
It's an absolute no-brainer. Yeah, anything we can do to help you.
And if I could just say a personal note of thanks, you know, I just got here, and along with some of what you said, Val, you know, I was director of development at the University of Kentucky and was needing to come south for some family reasons, and for two years, I was looking in the southeast for a place and a mission, right, that was worth spending the rest of my life on. And I chose this place. I didn't think I'd have a better opportunity. And I must say that one of the things that drew me was the community of Vero Beach as well. So it's the combination of the two. I've never seen, I've never seen such an involved community and engaged community.
No, actually, truthfully, every day here is Giving Tuesday. Every day.
It really is. It's impressed me so much.
It is. This is the best place.
It's unlike anything I've seen before, so I'm very, very happy to be here and very grateful for the support of the community and the council here.
I'll just share with you, over the years, the veterans have worked in collaboration with many organizations, and you're a key asset to the community. And, you know, if you go in different parts of the community, you can see very quickly that there is a need for what you bring.
Yeah.
Okay? And there are a lot of people that have a lot of talent that commit to you, and then there are people that likewise come to you, and once they're able to stand, because of whatever reason that's befall them, they're appreciative. So I think you've got a winning formula that's there, and I think there are many organizations in the community that look to work alongside you.
So what I'd like to request council is, and to the city clerk, Tammy Bersick, if y'all could get together, and they're on a very limited timeframe here, that, all that work's due by 11:30, isn't that right?
That's correct.
So if we could get a pledge from the city showing our unanimous support to that organization so that everybody can get it signed and help them get it out earlier than later, that would be great.
That would be great.
I assume everyone here agrees with that.
What's the timeline you're working on?
November 30.
Okay. Not 11:30 PM.
I thought it was tonight.
So if you could just get with the city clerk and put something together that we can all put our signature on, that'd be great.
I'll do it.
And thank you very much, and welcome to Vero. We're glad to have you.
Very glad to be here.
So we've pulled the second presentation for tonight, and we're going to move, we were going to move on to public comment, but we've made a move from the City Manager's Matters, items B, subsections 1, 2, and 3, and this will help some of the people from out of town get back down south. And yes, sir, Mr. Plasky, if you'd like to.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. City Council.
Thank you for being here.
Matt Plasky from Florida Power and Light. Wanted to give you a quick update on where we stand. We actually had a very positive week this week on the Vero Beach transaction from a regulatory standpoint. So as you know, a few weeks ago, we had hearings at the Public Service Commission that a lot of our team and some of the Vero team attended as well. Those hearings resulted in a staff position that was issued this week, actually, on Tuesday, Wednesday. That staff position was very positive in support of the Vero Beach transaction as it stands, so we are very encouraged by that. And in anticipation of the positive vote at the Public Service Commission on the 27th, which is next week, next Tuesday, we have already started a lot of the integration work, and we've been doing a lot of work to make sure that we're ready whenever that vote takes place, and again, we're anticipating a positive vote there. So just want to give you a couple of quick updates on where we are. Most importantly, we've met with employees, I think, several times since I was at least up here, and we've kind of gone through the process with them on what their offer letters are going to look like. We've initiated some background checks, drug tests, things like that, and just general administrative things that we need to do with the employees. So that's, that's in place already. Our HR, our Human Resources Team is working with Vero's Human Resources Team to work through all the issues. So that's, that's a great step forward, and that's going to ensure that the employees line up to the right positions, to the right locations, and so on. And on the employee side, and I say this kind of, I think, every time I'm here, but we really do appreciate all the work from the utility employees, Ted Fletcher's team, and the customer service team in Vero, on all the help that they've done so far on the integration effort. So greatly appreciated there, and we couldn't do it without them. Some other things that I just want to point out to you as we're working through, so kind of the major sections, because on the customer service side, we're working through the city to have a local presence in City Hall and in the, in the utility area, where we're going to have a desk set up to answer any customer questions once we, once we greenlight the transaction. So we'll have a representative there to answer any, any questions that are FPL-specific, and that'll be in addition to all the other support services for water and sewer and so on. So I think that will help out with just making sure that everybody has their questions answered as they transition to be FPL employees. We've also, we're also gearing up, getting ready to send out letters to customers as well, to our prospective customers, to welcome them to the FPL family. So those will be going out shortly, and they'll, they'll give you just general information about Florida Power and Light, what to expect, and so on. I think the most important thing there is the customers from Vero Beach do not need to do anything to transition over to FPL, to be FPL customers. That's probably the most important part of the whole thing. We're going to take care of everything there. But you'll get a Kinyou account numbers and all that information, so that, those letters should be going out here in probably the next two weeks or so. And then a few other things, so we're finalizing a lot of the real estate work. That's, that's a, that's a big step forward for us, doing all the surveys, getting everything in place. In fact, that's one of the things that's being approved today, is some of the lease agreements and so on. So that's going to, that's going to help us out as we move to that, to that transition date. And finally, we're just getting ready to go through all the other, other steps to make sure that everything works on day one. to make sure that everything works on day one, whenever day one is. So we're, we're really hoping to do this by end of year. I saw a newspaper article that said something about a Christmas present from FPL, which we're, we're hoping to deliver on, so.
So thank you for all of your wonderful work, and, I mean, you've just stuck with it and put your nose to the grindstone. We all appreciate it very much.
Absolutely.
Your children can be very proud of you. And you must be very proud of them, they're just a delight.
You wouldn't even know they were here, so well, but hey. It's a pleasure, yeah, yeah. Mr. Plasky has his two children here today. They have their, the day off, but their mother teaches at the school that they go to, and she had to work, so.
If they get the day off.
This has been fun, right? So far?
It's going to be a very good day during our centennial to actually do this. I always, I like to, a lot of people have been saying, oh, this has been going on since the 1970s. But I did find a reference from Pam Cooper that there was actually an offer from FPNL in the 1920s. So we're actually, and that was, that was like right when the bonds were being issued to build the, one of the power plants when they, it's, actually, people didn't realize this, Vero Electric started out as a private electric company. It was not initially owned by the city, and then it was, they just had a few traffic lights on the street and, but they couldn't really, didn't have the capital to expand and build a power plant as they started to need power in the 1920s, so they sold it to the city of Vero Beach. But right when they went to issue the bonds, FPNL made their first offer. So almost 100 years, it was, that was sometime in the 1920s, I haven't found the exact date, but almost 100 years later, finally.
It's a long process.
Yeah.
I think that's a, it goes a little past my time at FPL, I think.
But you're, you're the one who gets to finish it, so that's good.
Well, it's a whole team, it's not, it's a whole team, so.
It is a team effort.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Is there anything specifically we need to agree to?
Yes, you will be going over these leases, but I, I think it's important, and Matt knows as much as or more than most, that there were a lot of intricacies of this whole transaction. Little things such as the layout of Substation 1 on the old Post Annex site, how we could get access from both roads in order to give a little value to the property that the city will retain, which was very important. Florida Power and Light worked with us on that. And then the transition of, you know, the equipment. For example, you have on the agenda tonight where we're going to be paying a restocking fee for an item, for sewage gear that we ordered, but it would not fit into the realm of Florida Power and Light and the type of equipment that they use, so we're going to return that back. But we've been able to work through a lot of those type of issues. The personnel is something that is very, very important. Florida Power and Light spent a lot of time over here explaining to the employees what was the transition that was going to take place. I think it worked extremely well. And it goes, for example, one of the things, and Matt, you said, you know, that you're going to have people down here explaining FPNL, there's going to be a month in everyone's life that's on our utility system, you're going to get a bill from Florida Power and Light, and you're going to get a bill from the city of Vero Beach. And it's going to be a half a month, or whatever the portion of the month is that is on those reads. So if people just, don't be shocked that you still get that last bill, but at the same time, may, in the same mail, you'll get a bill from FPNL for the other portion.
And it could even happen that you got your FPNL bill before your Vero Electric bill. And it doesn't mean we're up to anything nefarious.
That is very, that is very true. And hopefully, we'll be able to explain that in customer service and with FPNL having a presence down there and try to work with the customers. Because that's some of the little information or little things that can cause a lot of confusion, and we would prefer this transition to really go as smoothly as possible.
Yep, absolutely. And we'll have, we'll have specially trained customer service representatives to answer those specific questions. They'll have an understanding of what happens here in Vero Beach for some period of time, which I think is going to be very important.
And we'll also be giving, for example, Florida Power and Light's not asking for the deposits from the customers, so you have a proportionate share of that bill, or your deposit that goes to electric, it goes to water, and it goes to sewer. So we'll be doing that by, by the ordinance that's in place now as to what credit you will get from the deposit you have. We have some very old customers that don't have deposits anymore, and then you have relatively new customers that will have deposits, and we'll be going through that transition as well.
There's a lot of moving parts.
A lot of moving parts. Yep, absolutely.
Always are. Thank you, Matt. And if you just want to, if you just want to kind of hang out until we get through these leases, just in case.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
We have two leases on substations at the airport.
One's a memorandum.
One's a memorandum, okay. One's a memorandum of a lease, the other is a lease agreement. And, but it affects substations that are on the airport. FAA has approved both of these. The airport manager has reviewed these in agreement as well. So these will be leases and lease payments made by Florida Power and Light to the airport. And we would recommend they have to vote independently on each one.
Don't have to, but we'll go ahead and discuss the escrow deposit agreement.
Okay, the escrow deposit agreement, that's with US Bank, and that's where all the items will be escrowed. And so on the day of closing, we will have one central depository where all this information and all the money goes that will be transitioned at that time of closing, so.
This is for escrow, the money to pay off the city's bonds.
And the bonds, yes.
And you'll need public comment.
Okay, so any public comment on this matter at this time? Okay, seeing none, no. Any council comment? No?
No. You need a motion?
Did you want to vote on each one, or you want to?
You can do it as a package.
Let's do it as a package. That's fine, move on to the next item.
Okay, need a motion, a second.
Motion.
Oh, we are going to vote, okay. Motion?
I'm seconding it. Oh, okay.
Who wants a motion?
I already did it three times.
All right, good. So you got one and three right there. Who's got, who's got a second?
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing done, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Another step, Matt.
Yeah.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
One more.
Thank you.
Okay, Jim, you want to go backwards now, or?
Why don't you go to the, public comment?
Got public comment now.
Okay. Any public comment on this matter?
No.
No, this is a general, general public comment.
I thought we already did this. But you're, you're done, we're going to wait on your other item until later, right?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, good. So we'll go to, we'll go to public comment then. This is where you get three minutes to speak about pretty much anything, so.
Are you going to, or is there going to be a public comment again when we get to the Marina issue? Because I think there's a lot of people here for the Marina. Can we potentially save all those public comments until we get to the Marina?
We could, we could do that if people want to wait for the...
I would prefer just because...
So that we're on the same subject matter at that time?
Yes. This is my recommendation, but whatever.
Okay, they're welcome to speak about whatever they like, but I agree with you, if you, if you're here to talk about the Marina, you might want to wait.
There will be another opportunity to speak on, specifically on the Marina at the time we get to that.
Usually, usually we do public comment, we vote on something, but I think it's important enough to...
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Let them, let them speak. That's right. Mr. Gafanti.
Good afternoon. My name is Joseph Gafanti, and I take action to the city of Vero Beach. I want to ask every one of the council members and the city manager for a number. And the number is the net result of what the city of Vero Beach is going to get at the end of this sale, assuming that it goes through. I would assume that if you don't give me an answer, that you're expressing your ignorance. I don't care who answers first, but I want to know if you know what the net result is after we pay off, or you see FMPA and lawyers and other costs.
If you wish, I will.
Yes, please.
I'd like to hear from all five or six of you.
Well, you can hear from the city manager right now and...
So you have no, yes, sir.
At the end of the...
Just a number, I, I don't need...
30 million is the number that, after the closing of the sale, plus we keep any proceeds that are a fund balance proceeds.
I need a number, that's all.
It was 50 or 50, it was somewhere in the range.
50 million?
That's right.
And you all concur with that?
It was well documented. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else for public comment? And like I said, at this point in time, you can really speak, you don't, you can speak about Marina now if you like, or you can wait for that subject matter to come up, or if you have something else you'd like to speak about, this would be the time to do it as, as well. Ms. Frye.
Good afternoon, Phyllis Frye, resident of Vero Beach. I would just like to urge the public to attend another meeting today. Yes, there's another meeting, a special call meeting at County Commission over at the Admin Building.
Assuming we can get out of here in time.
Yeah, yeah, well, and if that works out. I plan to attend because, as you know, our commissioners have been working, and many citizens and our legislators and elected officials, you included, have been working very hard on the All-Aboard Florida issue. What you might not know is that on November 27th, decisions can be made that will determine, in addition to all the battles we've won, if we actually win the war. So if an appeal becomes necessary, the commissioners are going to need some funding for that, and they've been very generous and supportive of all of our concerns, so let's take them across the finish line and attend today and give them support so we can win this thing.
And Ms. Frye, what time does that special call meet start?
5 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Hedy.
Make sure I heard correctly. Brian Hedy, Vero Beach, Florida. 50 million?
Yes, sir. At the end of the day, with the fund balance, assuming that we don't have to dip into that fund balance for some reason, plus the 30 million, it is the proceeds from, direct proceeds from the sale. We anticipate there will be about 20 million in the fund balance.
We have money in our accounts now that we've accumulated. We have working capital, if you will. Is that the 20, is that 20 million you're talking about there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's $20 million that we already have. We already own, we've already earned that money.
But in most transactions where you are selling a corporation, you sell, you sell the fund balance with those.
But we didn't do that in this case.
We did not do that, that's correct.
Okay, so out of we, the total dollar amount that we sold this utility for then was $185 million?
26, I think, is the real number.
$186 million. And out of the $186 million, not money we already have in our accounts, not money we already earned, out of that $186 million, how much do the city residents get? How much does the city get?
The 30 million.
30 million.
Yes, sir.
So we sold a utility worth $186 million. It's worth what you can get for it. And out of that, we're going to get 30 million, so there's $156 million that are going someplace else.
It's like paying off the mortgage of your home, yes, sir.
Paying off a mortgage?
Yes, sir.
On what?
We have, we have contracts for power supply with FMPA.
No, the mortgage, the mortgage. You said paying off the mortgage. What mortgage?
Well, we do have some, we have some bonds and they're...
Pension liabilities.
Okay, I'll talk about the bonds, or I'll listen to your, to your comment about the bonds. First, you said a mortgage, could you tell me what we have a mortgage on?
Well, the bonds are for mortgage, i.e. are against the assets of the utility.
Okay, so we have bonds that we need to pay off?
Yes, sir.
And what bonds does the city have that it has to pay off?
These would be bonds where we borrowed money for improvements, for example, to the power plant and other assets that we borrowed money for.
We borrowed money to improve the power plant, for generators, that kind of thing?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a dollar amount for the bonds on our electric power plant?
No, sir, I don't have those numbers with me.
Does any council member know what those bonds are?
It's been, it's been some time ago.
I have previously reviewed it, but I don't know off the top of my head.
I do recall that some of those improvements went toward 2% of our power production, though, so, you know.
If I could object, that the actual amount to be paid off would be determined on the closing date, but the original indebtedness was a little bit over $56 million.
Does anybody have any idea what we've paid off to date on that $56 million?
No, sir, I don't.
No ballpark, nothing? No idea?
So all the, all these numbers that you're asking for were presented at the budget hearings when we went through the plan of what we were going to do with the proceeds. It is all publicly available, and we, as city council members, we all have reviewed all these numbers. The fact that we can't memorize exactly what number was there?
I have a copy of it here, so the city clerk can, can give it to you.
Could you tell me then what the bonds on the power plant are?
I'm going to pass it to the city clerk and let her make a copy for you. I think that's, to be expeditious.
Should answer most of his questions.
Okay, well, can you hand that then to the city manager and have him tell me what that number is on the bonds for the electric power plant?
We have a Series 207B2. Well, no, I take that back, that's not against the power plant. This does not have the bonds directly related to the power plant, because that would come out of the 186 million. What we have in this document is how we are recommending to spend the money after the sale is concluded. So it does not have the number of the debt service. But we do have on our website, if you go on there, you can find our year-end audit, and it has all the debt service related to the various utilities, and it'll tell you what the debt payments are, when the payments are due, and the balance.
But you're set to close on $186 million, and you, you know you have a mortgage, but you don't know what it's for. You know you have some bonds, but you don't know what that amount is.
Mr. Hedy, you're asking for him to come up with numbers for you that you know.
Ballpark!
Listen, we've given ballpark numbers for...
Can you give it to me now?
For 10 years, and I think you've been here for most of those meetings.
Can you, can you give me a ballpark number now, what the bonds are on the electric power plant?
Is this like a trivia contest?
No, it's not a trivia contest. I'm one of the owners, and I'd like to know what the payments are.
The payments would be on our website, and I would recommend that you go and look at our audit, and it tells you the debt service, the amount of service that were on there, but that would be the more accurate number. Again, that number will change depending on when the closing is, because we make two annual payments on our debt service for that.
How much are the annual payments that you make?
It's about $5 to $5.5 million.
Right. And so there's something under $15 million still due on that, on those bonds.
So if you, so if you have any questions about that, you can...
Is that, is that an accurate guess?
And if you need assistance?
It is a guess. The answer to the question is, you really, I would say, please go look at the audit, and I can tell you.
Those bonds for the electric power plant, are they revenue bonds?
Yes, sir, they are.
Okay. So they're scheduled for payment on the revenue that's generated by the generators, by the power plant?
The only revenue that's on the electric is the customers. When we send a bill, that's the revenue that's generated, and that goes to debt service.
And Mr. Hedy, if you have any more questions, I'm sure you have Mr. O'Connor's email, and you can go to the website if you have any trouble with that.
Well, you know, I've tried to give answers.
I don't know, because you keep speaking over me, so I don't know. And I'm quite frankly tired of having to raise my voice because we can sing together, but we can't talk together, okay?
No, I doubt that we can sing together either. But you, I've asked these questions, and you've refused to give me answers. You tell me, and you make it sound for the public, like, oh, just go to the website, it's there, and, oh, we have a piece of paper here, we're going to make you a copy. But if you've got a piece of paper and has the answer on it, and you're going to make me a copy, why can't you, for the public, just read what the number is?
Because it's not, we don't have, we don't sit here with the numbers in front of us because this, you know, we didn't anticipate what questions you would have for us to see.
So the numbers aren't on that piece of paper?
I don't have that piece of paper. But it's on the website.
The debt services, the debt service is not on that piece of paper. That piece of paper indicates where the payments will go with the remaining. It's not part of the one hundred and eighty-six million dollars.
Okay. The bonds at the electric power plant started out at fifty-six million dollars. I remember when they were down around twenty million dollars, but you don't know what that number is.
No, sir.
If we assume it's twenty, that still leaves one hundred and sixty-six million dollars. Could you give me some idea where one hundred and sixty-six million dollars is going?
In excess of a hundred million, it's going to FMPA.
A hundred million dollars is going to FMPA?
Yes, in excess of that.
In excess of?
Yes.
And why are we paying, out of the proceeds of the sale of our utility, why are we paying FMPA over a hundred million dollars of our proceeds?
Mr. O'Connor, if I could stop you right there. This has been discussed
Many, many times.
Many, many times. He's been part and parcel of every single conversation, minus, you know, save a few. So I will tell you again, three minutes is up, sir. If you need more information, we'll be more than glad to help you get that information.
You know, liars, cheats, and thieves should not be in charge of governing agencies, and it's just as simple as that.
And everybody has a right to their own opinion. Thank you for sharing yours. Have a nice day.
And, you know, it would seem to me that if you're going to sell a city-owned asset, you ought to be able to tell one of the owners or all of the owners
Mr. Hedy.
What the proceeds, where they're going. And you just flat-out refuse, and you say, oh, it's on the website.
Your time is up.
Oh, it's in meetings that you've been in.
Mr. Hedy.
A hundred other different excuses.
Do you want to be out of order again?
But you won't answer the question publicly. I filed lawsuits in circuit court to try to get your answers, and you spent tens of thousands of dollars
If you would please sit down, we won't have to have you removed from the building.
To prevent any council member or anybody from giving an answer. This is an incredible fraud.
Thank you, Mr. Hedy. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right. Does anybody else have any pertinent information they'd like to share with us this evening?
Just way, I apologize for trying to respond, but
It's quite all right. Listen, we have the answers, and there's no need for an apology. This is, it's an old matter. We've all heard it, all of us here. Ma'am, would you like to come speak?
No, I just wanted to say
Actually, because
I saw this gentleman for the first time.
But ma'am, I can't
You have to come to the microphone because this is all televised.
Because nobody can
I just want to say, I've seen this gentleman for the first time, and the only thing I, my feeling was, he speaks on behalf of us, whether he bothers you or
Okay. But ma'am, if you're gonna, you're publicly commenting, so you need to either
Come to the microphone.
Come to the podium, or, or I don't know what. Thank you.
The protocol, you state your name, and then you can talk.
Yeah, hi, my name is Anne Lovey-Lett, and this is, I think, my third city hall meeting. And I've met, I've seen this gentleman for the first time, and he looks like he bothers people with questions, and I don't know if he has internet access. I was just amazed that the audience, as well as you, talked down on him, which I think this is not the place to do that. And I think as a citizen of Vero Beach, if it takes somebody like him to bother you, the city, and all the money, people that are involved in this money deal, and it's a lot of money, I think he has the right to be bothersome. And it seems that he doesn't get the right answers. And my impression today is, you don't sell city property every day for one hundred and eighty-six million dollars. And I think you owe us, and this bothering gentleman, a more precise preparation on your side. If he was here for the tenth time, fifteenth time, twentieth time, I don't care, your obligation is to provide him with the answers. You cannot say to him at the thirtieth meeting, go to a website.
Mrs. Lovey-Lett, we have provided answers.
And as a new member of Vero Beach, and a third time coming to this city hall meeting, I think your behavior against this gentleman, no matter how bothersome he is, he is your citizen, and you are his elected people.
I appreciate that.
And I do not, I think
I appreciate that.
I think your reaction and your answers in regard of this gentleman are very unsatisfying, and I would even say unprofessional.
All right.
I agree with your whole argument.
Okay, great. Thank you for the vote of support. Any other public comment this evening? Okay. Going once, going twice. Public comment is closed. I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. Mr. City Manager?
We have a renewal contract. This is for carbon dioxide annual supply contract. It represents about twenty-five thousand dollars in annual expenditures, and is used at the wastewater treatment plant in our treatment process. The leisure square restroom remodel, this is the final pay and acceptance. It was done in accordance to the contract. That's eleven thousand, seven hundred, three dollars and thirty-three cents for the final pay. Cancellation of the purchase order of a substation seven ABB switchgear. That's a cost of seventy-seven thousand, four hundred, forty-eight dollars and twenty cents. And then we have a license agreement for the use of city real property at the Vero Beach Rowing Club, and this is down at the wastewater treatment plant. We have stored some of their equipment down there, and they're still using that until they finish their, their facility that they're still doing fundraising for, and that would be the one that McWilliams Park. But they'll typically, eventually will move their stuff from this, but we have to have a license agreement with them for the duration that they're there.
I assume there's no cost related to that?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the public comment.
Any council discussion first on this consent agenda? Any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to city council matters. This is new business, and this is where, remember I said earlier, we're going to speak about the Marina, so we're going to get into that now. Start with a council staff and community discussion. And Ms. Laura Moss, did you have anything that you wanted to start with? This is your item.
Yes. And I know, I think we have other related matters to the Marina. Yes, it's under City Manager. So do you want to do the whole thing at one time, evaluation of requests or proposal for the lease of the city Marina?
That'd be great. Yeah, have any questions?
Eight A.
We can do that.
If you want to just, I'm, we'll be talking about the Marina now. Just as a matter of background, and I'm, I'm reading from the minutes, this is page thirty-four, and this was the meeting of August 21st of this year. That was when we first discussed proposed leasing of the city Marina. And I said at this time, I'm reading it now from the minutes, I noted that there has been no request from anyone in the community to lease the Marina. She said if they wish to honor the wishes of the community, it would be not to lease the Marina so that we don't need an RFP. And at that meeting, Mr. Sykes made a motion to put out an RFP. Mr. Young seconded the motion, and it passed four to one, and I was the one voting against it. The reason I voted against it is, we've been doing a lot of RFPs lately, and I think City Manager, you might have been at that meeting even, said that the city is getting a bit of a reputation of being a looky-loo, you know, that we just go out and, well, let's get an RFP. But to me, and I said this earlier to some, some people in the audience, to me, it's like, you know, just going out and sitting in the car. I mean, you don't get into the car unless you want to go someplace. I mean, you should have a sense of direction, that you definitely want to do this. I believe strongly that we need to refurbish the Marina, and that we need strong leadership on site. I don't think we've had that, with all due respect to staff. I don't think we've had a real take-charge person. And I'll offer Water and Sewer as an example. I think Water and Sewer was not in good shape a few years ago. We brought in Rob Bolton. He came in and just, he just whipped it into shape. And I think that Marina is, and actually, I said this publicly, I don't think it was this budget session, I think it was the previous year, that the Marina, I see it as a turnaround situation, but I see it as something that we can do ourselves, you know, especially, well, if we pay off the bonds. And I'm not in any way in favor of, and that was the sheet, by the way, that I had handed down to, to the city manager, was how to spend the, the cash that we will be receiving from FPL. And one of the suggestions that was reviewed by the Finance Commission, this was last April, was to, to pay off the debt. And that's, by that, I'm referring to a Series 2007A Marina property loan. And the total on that is three point four million. And again, I'm reading from this sheet, which, by the way, is on the internet. If you go to the city website, covb.org, and then just click on Agenda, go to Finance Commission, and they discuss this in April. But at any rate, that the three point four, if you pay it off, it frees up, and I'm reading from this, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars per year for ten years in the Marina Fund, which could be used for Marina capital improvements. And that's instead of general fund transfers. And that's to stop declining Marina net asset value. And this was, again, was prepared by staff. And generally, in general, I guess I should say, I'm not really a fan of paying off debt because some of the other debt, and I don't recall now if that's the case with this, but even if you're paying it off in advance, you still have to pay all the interest. So, you know, I really, I hate doing that. I don't, I don't see the point in it because we all know that a dollar today is not going to be worth the same amount ten years from now. We don't have to be economists to know that, that that's so. I hesitate to do that. But in this case, you know, the situation, I think warrants that consideration. And I'm willing to consider that, to pay off the debt. I know we need to do a lot of serious work on this, and we want to be sure that we have the right people. And I know there are a huge number of people in the community even who are interested in participating. You know, we have a lot of, we have a lot of smart, energetic people out there. So I'd like to, I'd like to see as many of them be able to participate as we can manage. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And by the way, this is, this is on the current agenda. It shows the, the debt payment. That's one of the things that I had uploaded. It shows, it breaks it out by year. And also, I had uploaded Section 5.05 of the city charter, and this is Municipal Marina is protected property. All right? It cannot be sold, leased, or traded without a referendum. The part of it where it gets confusing is the South Complex, and that's the, the dry dock storage area, and it also includes where Waddell now leases, and they, they call that the South Complex. I'm not sure why. It's called other names, too. But I'm not going to, not going to go into that now. But anyway, that's not, that does not, does not have protected status. So that, presumably, you could do something with that right away. I don't see where legally we would be able to, to lease the Marina without a referendum. I think the people should weigh in on that. I think that's a decision that the people should make. And I speak to a lot of people, and by and large, everyone I've spoken to, this is not something that they wish to do. We wish to, to hold it dear and to refurbish it, not to turn it into a Marina for mega yachts and restaurants and lifestyles of the rich and famous, and, you know, we're not, we're not, you know, we're not, we're not thinking about that. That's, that's not, that's just not who we are as a, as a community. And, you know, we need to stay true to ourselves, always, always. Stay true to yourself, you won't go wrong. Thank you.
City Manager, just, as a, as a point from me, and this isn't going to change, influence my decision at all whatsoever tonight, do we actually, are we actually in these, it's not like a simple interest rate loan? We actually have to pay off the interest as well if we pay it off early?
We will save about a hundred thousand dollars if we pay the loan off. But you have to pay a lot of the interest.
A lot of the interest.
The way that the loans were structured, we took a lot of interest upfront, paid interest upfront, and put principal in the back. And that was, it's how you structure the loans. If you, if you put a callback provision, which is where you get to buy it back at the face value, your interest rates are usually a little higher. So the city council at the time must have wanted the interest rates lower, and so they put it with, the callback provisions are very, very limited in what they do. But it's between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars that you will save if you pay it off.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you for the clarification. Council, any discussion from, from you?
Well, does the city manager have something to report?
Yes, if you want me to move my item up here.
If you would. Yeah, I want to hear what the staff was
Okay. Give you a little history. The city council, as you know, requested that we go out and see if anyone was interested in leasing the Marina. We identified twenty-four different companies at one time. So we did this in a two-step process. The next thing we did, we put out a request for interest of those twenty-four, who would be interested in coming to the city of Vero Beach to lease the Marina. We had four parties that showed interest. From there, we went to a request for proposals. Send us your proposal if you're going to lease it, what terms, conditions that you would put into those, into the lease agreement. We received two back. We formed a committee that gave an evaluation based on the principles of doing a lease, for example, the term of the lease, the capital projects they were going to do, the return back to the city in the form of lease payments or whatever. And of the two, Vero Beach LLC ranked highest of the two. Oasis was number two, and of course, they were the second. And so in front of you today is two questions. One, do we want to still continue to lease the Marina? The second is, if you do, you see a pretty good terms and conditions for that lease agreement. We would, you would give us the authority to go and negotiate a final contract that we would bring back to the city council for your consideration. That final contract, of course, would be down in the weeds and tell you the more defined terms and conditions of a lease on the Marina, our expectations, and that, the expectations of the tenant that were on there. I do know at least one of the proposers are here today, if there's any questions from the city council. But that's the long and the short of it. It really boils down, one was a percentage of revenues, the other was a three hundred thousand dollar annual payment. The three hundred thousand dollar is really what I would recommend as well. If you get into a percentage of revenues, that opens books up to a total public domain, and it's not a good business decision, I wouldn't think, but
That would be an annual, an annual audit, in other words?
It could be an annual audit, yes, sir. It could be even audits even more frequently, that would be up to the city council to do that. And then you get into the, you know, defining what are the revenues, what are directly related to the Marina that they're operating. In the Vero Beach LLC, Marina LLC, they had two proposals. One is to take the existing Marina, do capital projects on it. It limited the footprint to what the Marina is today. They put in a second proposal that expanded it considerably. They talked about the yacht club, using part of the dog park and this kind of stuff. We administratively excluded that because it didn't change the lease agreement, the lease payment, so we didn't see why we'd even be interested in that. So we went with the footprint of just the Marina that is there. They put in their proposals as to what the capital improvements that they would propose going into the Marina itself. A lot of it fit into our five-year capital plan, so we gave a strong, strong number for that.
And what I, from what I'm understanding, this would be a, take, take your philosophical ideas out of it, this would be either virtually a zero-sum deal or a negative-sum deal?
Yes, sir, that is true. We gave you also the cash flows on the existing Marina. This would be zero, would actually be a loss if you look at all the revenues and the revenue streams coming from the Marina packed back to the general fund. Because the three hundred thousand wouldn't even cover the debt service. As an example, right now, the Marina covers the debt service plus a hundred thousand dollar infusion into the general fund. Now, we, recent years, over the last two to three, we've taken a portion of that hundred thousand and put it back into the Marina for improvements that were really needed at the time.
Or more. Or more. We did a hundred and fifty thousand dollar bathroom, so.
Yeah. But I mean, it came out of the hundred thousand it was coming in. But the hundred thousand was over multiple years, and so that bathroom was two years, theoretically, the hundred and fifty came out of a two hundred thousand dollar contribution back to general fund.
Yeah, and it's actually interesting, we were just talking about FMPA earlier, and I'm looking at your memorandum, City Manager, from February 7th of this year, Marina Options, where you discussed weaknesses of leasing the facility. And they're brief, so I'll just read them. The city has had a history where breaking a lease can be expensive. We sure have seen that. The tenant will have control, that's, any of these companies will have control to set the climate and culture of the Marina. The tenant would have to work with the yacht club as per the lease agreement, remember, that's a private club, and grant opportunities would be very limited. So those, that was from you back in February. But also, you know, for, for council discussion, this lease pays us three hundred thousand dollars a year, but it's very long-term, and it doesn't include any increase for upside, you know, upscaling or, or any kind of benefit, upgrading, thank you. And I apologize, I attended the county commission meeting this morning, so I'm, I'm already, you know, ten hours into it.
But you can get out of here in fifty minutes and go to another one.
I know. You're right. I could do three, I have a trifecta.
This, this does have CPI escalator at a maximum of three percent, so there is an escalator over, every year of the lease.
But Harry, Harry, thank you for helping me. I'm talking about, you would make a lot more money. I mean, we'll, just we'll make more money, presumably. If we refurbish the marina properly, we will produce greater revenue. I think that's probably safe to say. There's a demand.
You could charge more.
We know there's a demand. We could charge more.
Yes, ma'am. What I'm looking at, if the council decides we're not going to lease the marina out, then that'll be a charge for us to start looking at capital projects on the marina. For several years, we have not reinvested in the marina because there was always this, the philosophical decision has to be made, should we be in the marina business to begin with? If the answer to that question is yes, then we need to invest in it like we, and you use the example of Water and Sewer. Rob Bolton had to have money in order to do and capitalize on the projects he did. The same would be for this enterprise as it was for Water and Sewer in order to make it successful. But you have to be prepared to do that.
What you're saying, from my point of view, is really what this whole discussion's about. And that is, and I mentioned this, you know, when the marina came up earlier, is the most dangerous factor for the marina is the city council. You know, there's got to be a resolve that we're going to have a marina that is in keeping with the other, with the other standards that we've had in this community. And there is a reservation that, well, maybe there's a better way to obtain management that would achieve that. But really, I think that's secondary. I mean, because if, and I'm one of those that supports the idea that this should be retained as a part of our community, then with that decision has to be a commitment that we have the resolve in the management and the mechanism, which is the funding, to make it world-class, which is, I think, what all of us want to have here in the community. So, you know my perspective.
Because we already own the marina. So it's not like we're deciding, it's not like we're going out to buy a marina. Would I go out to buy a marina? No. And by the way, I'm not planning to buy anything, Jim. Don't worry. The budget stays as is. But we own the marina, so I think, you know, we keep it.
The other thing that's important that some of the public were sort of misled, we are not selling the marina. You cannot sell the marina unless you get out from under the grants that helped purchase this and some of the fund grants that we have. So it's not a question, are you selling the marina? It's a question, are you leasing the marina?
A long-term lease, yes.
And just to provide a little historical context here, you know, unfortunately, it happens far too often that in the exploration of solutions to benefit this community, things unfortunately get a bit twisted. And it isn't perceived the way that it was intended coming from council and the community. I think most of you, regardless of where your position on how this is managed in the future, would say that, you know, the marina currently is not being utilized to its highest and best use. And so council decided, well, why don't we go ahead and take a look at potential solutions of how we can better this incredible asset? You know, there's no harm in exploring all options whenever you have to make a decision of this magnitude. But, you know, I have no reservations in being blunt. We have given, as council, since I've been on, more than adequate opportunity for current management to, A, produce results, and moreover, produce a plan to show us how we can have results in the future. None of that's happened, certainly not to my satisfaction. And so regardless of how this property is held in the future, I would not be in favor of putting another dime into this property until we find management that can do what the definition of that is, which is manage the asset properly. And so it's been very frustrating to see funds allocated for, you know, redoing bathrooms and funds allocated to fix docks after hurricane damage and painting the marina. I mean, the marina started to be, work on that with painting, I don't know, a year and a half ago.
It was longer than that.
It's still, half of the building isn't painted. So, I mean, it's just, it's egregious at this point. And, you know, we do need to find a solution to help benefit the marina and the community. It's an asset that I've used since I was a kid here. I'm proud that we have it. It's incredible. But its current status is untenable. And so, you know, please don't misunderstand or misrepresent what the intentions were here. It's not, you know, throw your arms up in the air, this thing's going away. We just want to figure out a way to make it better. And so we're exploring those options.
Just for information to the council, that is my responsibility on the management, and that will change.
And I agree with Vice Mayor Seck's thought process that we probably shouldn't continue to throw good money at bad, I guess, to fund anything until we know how it's going, who's going to be doing it and how it's going to be done. And, yes, sir?
I was just going to ask, who on the council has read through the entire packet?
I have not had an opportunity to entirely read through everything yet, so I'm not prepared to say.
So if you had read, it's really long. It's 132 pages, I think. I think that one's 132 and the other one's not quite as long. But there's a lot of extensive information. We actually even have some of the videos that were done. And the issues at the marina are far more than just the cosmetic stuff like the bathrooms and someone falling in. There's a whole bunch of structural issues that have been identified. So I was thinking about this a lot, and I put all my words down into writing, so I'm just going to read what I wrote and my thoughts on this. Beatles great Ringo Starr, who's no right-winger, once said, "Everything government touches turns to crap. This is not because of the people. The people who work for private businesses are the same type of people who work in government. It's not the government employees, it's the system. The Vero Beach City Marina is a perfect opportunity to ask again the question, what is the proper role of government? Should our local city government be delivering government electric? No. Should our city government be providing government swimming pools with annual subsidies of $200,000? Should our local government be in any business where they have no business?" Barack Obama, no right-winger, once said, "The role of government has never been to plan for every detail or dictate every outcome. At its best, government has simply knocked away barriers to opportunity and laid the foundation for a better future. Our people, with all their drive and ingenuity, always end up building the rest. And if we can do that again, if we can continue building that foundation and making those hard decisions on behalf of the next generation, I have no doubt that we will leave our children in the America that we all hope for." Milton Friedman said, "The proper role of government is exactly what John Stuart Mill said in the middle of 19th century on liberty. The proper role of government is to prevent other people from harming an individual. Government, he said, has never, never has any right to interfere with an individual for that individual's own good." Thomas Jefferson said, "I predict future happiness for Americans. They can prevent the government from wasting the labors of people under the pretense of taking care of them." My goal when I ran for city council, and I served my term on city council, is to reverse the inappropriate growth of local government. The most obvious example is completing the sale of Vero Electric to FP Now. Everyone knows my position on Leisure Square. Leisure Square was a YMCA that was not economically viable. They managed to find the only entity naive enough to think they could do a better job than a private nonprofit. They went to local government. Despite the best efforts of good people, it's not the people who are in these organizations, though, it's not the, despite the best efforts of good people, consistent with Ringo Starr's quote, "Leisure Square will continue to be a money pit of mediocrity as long as government continues to run it." As for the city marina, we have an opportunity to bring a failing embarrassment up to the highest professional marina management and facility standards at no cost to our city through a public-private partnership. We have the opportunity to make the right first impression about the quality of our community to boaters who enter our city through our city marina. We have the opportunity to own all of the marina capital improvements at the conclusion of the lease. It becomes the property of our community. We can either put our head in the sand, deny there's an issue, and wish that doing the same thing over and over will somehow come to a different result than in the past. Or we can choose to get government out of another business where it has no business and proceed along a path of progress that fits with the culture of our community. The same 50 or so activists who opposed reforming Leisure Square, many of whom opposed the sale of Vero Electric, will vocally oppose common sense progress on rehabilitating our city marina. Jefferson also said, "We in America do not have government by the majority. We have government by the majority who participate. I am here to represent the majority of citizens who want reasonable progress, consistent with our local culture, improved amenities, lower taxes, and limited government."
Very well said. Thank you. Thank you very much. This time, I would like to ask council if they have any questions for the proposing group. The name again, please? Not Oasis.
No, an Oasis may be here. I'm not sure about that. But the Vero Beach Marina LLC.
Vero Beach Marina LLC.
Yeah, I do have a question for Wayne. Councilwoman Moss mentioned earlier that we could not legally lease this without a referendum vote. Can you confirm or deny that?
Well, obviously, it depends on how you interpret the charter.
Can we have a few, I mean, people in the audience are really not supposed to be commenting in the middle of this, and...
I concur.
Thank you.
Basically, again, and Ms. Moss is absolutely correct, the, what's called the South Complex, for one, has never been officially incorporated into the marina or been added specifically to the charter. So that one is less of an issue. As far as the old marina, it is listed as just a municipal marina. The exception to not leasing, not, you can't sell without a referendum, but you can lease so long as it serves a public purpose. By their nature, marinas serve a public purpose, whether it's owned by the city or operated by the city or it's operated by a private entity, so long as it's open to the public and serves that public boating purpose and recreational purpose, which is the other leg of the requirement, has to be for a public purpose and also serves a recreational purpose. And in both cases, I would certainly interpret that it does meet that. In fact, in any lease, we would certainly want to require and would certainly suggest that there would be a limitation in the lease specifically like we have in the, like is in the dog park lease, where it has to be open to the public, can't close it, can't make it a private club, it has to be open to the public. So in that sense, it, the way we've looked at it, it would be serving a public purpose and obviously would be recreational in nature.
Or the dock at the row house, it was the same kind of a deal, correct?
Sure.
When we said, yes, you can build a dock, however, it has to be open to the public.
Right. Right. And it does include the ability to have incidental concessions, just as the theater has concessions, the museum has concessions, they sell food and drink. Those are things that could be done there. They sell motor oil, gasoline, you name it. It's a marina.
They already do that. They already...
Exactly. They're basically, the way you look at it, the tenant would be kind of stepping into the shoes of the city and operating it, but they would have the possessory right to be there because of a lease.
And just for the community, what it says, it's short. This is Section 5.05. "A, except as provided in subsection B, the following parks and public lands may not be sold, leased, traded, or given away by the city unless such sale, lease, trade, or gift is approved by a vote of the electors of the City of Vero Beach. The properties are as follows, and there are 26 listed. The municipal marina is number nine." Section B, which is what Mr. Comant was just referring to, says, "The foregoing properties may be leased without a referendum only for a public or civic purpose, which also serves a recreational, artistic, or cultural purpose, including incidental concessions." I think that's, I'm not an attorney, but I think that's definitely open to interpretation. And I disagree because if you say, I mean, everything has a public purpose. Every single one of these pieces of property listed, all 26, have a public purpose of some kind. So if you're going to say, you can do whatever, you know, whatever you want without a referendum, it applies to all 26. You basically invalidate this whole thing. What I would construe it to mean, with regard to public purposes, more of a nonprofit, you know, not, you're not leasing it to a business, you're leasing it, you know, to the dog park, for example, you know, something, that kind of an organization. I'm not in favor of leasing it anyway. I'm just trying to clarify, you know, my opinion.
The larger picture as well is if you look at the enterprises that comprise our city. The marina has been an enterprise that has been here for the beginning, Vero Beach. And for us, the five of us, to make a decision that fundamentally alters the nature of our community without going to the public and soliciting their input would be totally inappropriate. And I think that would be something that would speak against the trust that's been placed into the five of us, whether or not this is a specific interpretation of the charter. And with Laura Moss, I disagree that this would construe something that should go to the vote of the public.
Anyone, anyone who actually made a proposal have anything that they'd like to add to the conversation this time? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Brian Arnold. I am the co-founder and vice president of Business Development for Oasis Marinas. We were one of the ones that presented, and the reason that we presented it as a lease is that's what was requested. Our firm currently manages 21 marinas, all of which are infinitely more profitable than they were when we took them over. 50% of them are or will be going through a renovation, much like you want. And all 20, well, 18 of the 21 marinas are management fee agreements where we work for ownership. Three of them are municipals. So we would be open to a management fee structure. The reason we presented it as a lease and a percentage of revenue is that's what was requested. But we would be open to, you know, to any, really, any model that benefits the marina.
So if we had constructed our request, then you could have addressed it as a management capacity?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Just a point of information. We did go out and look for management of the marina at one time. And the city council at that time said that they were not interested in a management firm coming in. They were more interested in a lease. But we looked at management firms. I don't know if Oasis was one of them, but we had a firm that actually came down here and made a presentation.
If I recall, the issue with just a management company is that we need significant capital improvements like, very, very soon, based on some of the inspections that were done in this process. And so, in general, we were under the impression that with management contracts, you're not going to invest your capital because you don't know, unless it's a long-term management agreement.
We pitched the term only because the amount of debt service that was going to be needed for the $5.5 million we projected for a complete renovation. You know, obviously, the longer you can drag that out, the more you have to do that. But we don't, every marina that we manage has a one, three, five, and 10-year master plan. How that gets paid for, I mean, I don't mind paying, I'll pay the $5.5 million under a management fee agreement. Understand that if you decide to depart ways, that...
You want your money back.
The note's going to come due. But, you know, as far as the deal structure goes, I really, I actually prefer a management fee over a lease. But it really, because really, with, all you're doing with a lease is you're passing on the risk to somebody else. With a management fee agreement, the risk is still yours. But as far as how it gets paid for, I really, I mean, I don't mind paying for it in either source, just understand that it would either be leveraged against the property, in which case it wouldn't matter if I was managing it or not, because the note would stay with the property. Or, but we're open to any structure. It doesn't necessarily have to be a lease. And quite honestly, 18 of my 20-some deals are management fees, several of which are municipals. So, I mean, I'm open to any, any structure like that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Where are the other municipal management deals?
I have, all three of the municipal deals I have are in the Chesapeake Bay, the City of Cambridge. I'm doing a rebuild right now with a private-public partnership in Baltimore, and then also one in DC. And then, none of them are currently in Florida, but we are, two of my, two of the employees and partners are actually here. One of them is in operations, and one of them is actually our construction manager who lives just about an hour south of here. So, you know, we have the infrastructure in place to oversee a property in Florida. It's just a matter of the right partner.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Any other questions for Mr. Arnold this time? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bruce Barquette with Collins Brown Barquette. I represent Vero Beach Marina LLC, and I will tell you that they're not interested in a management structure. But I was thinking that, I'm not sure you guys are prepared to make a final decision today. I think that Ms. Moss pointed out something very important. You are going to get a reputation of putting out these RFPs and having interested parties come in and put in a proposal, and then you just decide not to do the deal. I know that Fort Pierce went through that with its marina area. Very qualified investors and proposers put in proposals, went down and made the presentation, then Fort Pierce decided they didn't want to do it. Now Fort Pierce is looking again. They've changed their mind because they hadn't really fully evaluated it. The very qualified people aren't interested in going down and making proposals again. And there are some here in Vero Beach that were on the top of the list. So, and I think you should do whatever's best for Vero Beach. I'm not advocating that you do one thing or the other. I'm not sure that you're all... I'm not sure that you're all prepared today to make that final decision and suggest maybe you think about what you should do before you reject the proposals that are before you.
And there's no doubt that we have begun to earn that reputation.
Well, and that's my only point. I defer to Oasis, if you decide to go with a management, that's not going to be my client. If a management company, if Oasis is qualified, that's great. But again, before you make that final decision of rejecting what's before you, I think you might, my suggestion is you think about it a little bit and perhaps not take final action today. That's all.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any other discussion from council at this time? All right, let's move on. Yes, sir. And you are who?
Bob Kelly, I don't represent anybody except myself in Vero Beach.
So, you take public comment right now?
Yeah, I was going to say we'll take public comment, so, I hadn't actually asked for it, but if you want to be the first up, come on.
Bob Kelly, I live in Vero Beach. I saw something at the dog park the other day, and it had an outline of some construction docks and what have you, I'm going to say in front of the dog park, and that some of the area that's for the small dogs is going to be apportioned for parking. And so, I'm not sure...
That was actually section seven, Mr. City Manager, that was in the plans, was that?
Yeah, that was, that might have been section seven, that's not included in these proposals that we're recommending.
Okay, so, the whole discussion now is you're talking about keeping the marina under the government, or leasing it to another company, or...
Right.
Yes, okay.
Correct. With capital improvement and a long-term lease.
Understood. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You know, I would state it a little differently, I think that the people keep that, and I'm not arguing, not quibbling with you, but just the wording of it, it's really, it's not government, it belongs to the people. The people keep the marina, you know?
Yeah, in actuality, the government owns it either way.
You've got it, we can do, yeah, we can, you know, well, if you listen to the people and make them part of it, then, you know, that's the way it should be.
Well, the real question, though, is, in both scenarios, the government still owns it, in both cases.
But the government is the people, they own it.
I understand, but in one situation, you have someone managing it, and the other one, you have the government managing it.
Right. To be sure, that is accurate. It's not, they're not transferring ownership to a private entity.
Well, that's true, the staff, right, the staff will run it, and we've discussed that, City Manager, so, yes.
But, yes, sir.
Here are copies of the two pages that I'm going to go through.
Yep.
So, how do I turn this on? Just...
I'm supposed to be in charge of this, since I have to see?
Yes, that's what, that seat, that's the responsibility of that seat.
You could farm out management of that machine. All right, you guys coming?
It just needs to be turned around, Bob.
Well, you're doing that, I'm going to run quick, got a cup of coffee.
You know, while we're doing this, I'll say one other thing.
This is the one greeting about this.
At the farmer's market a few weeks ago, I was having a conversation with someone, a sailor, actually, and I have done sailing, I have done bareboat charter sailing in different places around the country and outside the country. But at any rate, what the person said was, his concern was, he had sailed the entire East Coast, and that the marinas were all starting to look alike. And he actually liked ours for being unique, in spite of all its problems, it's unique, it reflects us, we'll just make a better job of it, that's all. Welcome, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, council, thank you, mayor, senior managers of the city. My name is Bob Jones, 405 Date Palm. I'm here at the request of a good friend and sailing buddy of mine, Keith Drewett, who's also a Vero Beach resident on Eugenia, and he's out of town for the holidays, and asked me to talk you through analysis he's done, both on the marinas, financial as well, as well as the LLC, which I refer to in this as the Kennedy Holdings proposal. Keith is a successful turnaround CEO, and he's also an accomplished sailor, having sailed the whole eastern seaboard for many years. If you look at the data, as Keith has summarized it, essentially, there is a little bit more than the 300 in year one, we get a tiny share of the fuel sale profit. So, think of the base year as 316. Keith's conclusion is that that's not, is not adequate for the value of the marina. The marina now has cash flows, actually, of about $460,000, plus miscellaneous income of 47, for a total cash flow before capital outlays of about $550,000. So, the difference between the two proposals is in the $233,000 range. Now, clearly, you know, capital is an issue, and the pace at which capital is put into the thing is an important thing. Further, future, there are very few accelerators on this lease payment. So, it'll grow at max 3% a year, and there's no sharing of expansion profit or rate increase profit with the city, that's not in there. Further, the only thing that one has to evaluate this is a pro forma that was included in the RFP pack, and that basically showed revenue growing at 1% a year, which Keith believes is very conservative, you know, clearly with renovated marina, we also see several rate structure increases, in particular, seasonal pricing of even longer-term, you know, full month type things, that there are ways for this marina to earn more revenue. And then, finally, there's a belief that at least 5% revenue increase should be possible, it's 2% above the 3% assumed inflation increase. So, the first message is, you probably should be able to get a better deal for this marina than the one you have there.
Mr. Jonesy, you going to be able to summarize this relatively quickly, though?
I'm sorry?
For the time limits that we have on public comment, are you going to be able to summarize relatively quickly?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just, here is a set...
I understand.
A set of other considerations, and I'll just go through them real quickly. The city could actually, the assumption clearly in these numbers is the city would, in either case, would pay off the marina debt. But the city also could accelerate renovation to get the benefits of those, and Keith believes that those could be paid off fairly quickly, two, three years, four years. Once renovated, the marina could drive significant excess cash flow into the general fund. Marine expansion would only be addressed if financially justified, residents would remain control of expansion and the environmental impact on the lagoon control. That is something you do give up when you ask someone else to invest their money into an asset.
Okay.
I want to make one more point, and then I'll get off the thing. The marina, as we know, is an ambassador to this city, okay? And we have 20,000 visitor days on boats, and so, the value of this marina, if they only, they easily spend $150 a day in our community, the value of this marina is significantly more than the potential profitability of it to Vero. These people spend a lot of money in the community, and that alone may suggest a reason for keeping it, keeping control.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Good afternoon, my name's Warren Justice, I own property here in Vero Beach. I've spent a lot of time with marinas in Chesapeake Bay, condo-type marina, I've been on the board and all like that, I've also, in my banking career, taken a lot of them back, foreclosed on them, et cetera, and had to resell them. This is a water-oriented community, and I think that the city has a very valuable asset, I've seen the marina myself, and I don't see the city should ever take and let someone else take over the marina. I think, basically, what the city should do is find a management company like Oasis or somebody else that has good experience in that, and they can run it, they can make sure, they can oversee the construction, but you will have to invest money in a marina. The life of a marina is normally, if it's a fixed pier type, is about 40 years, when you better start replacing stuff after that. I don't know how old this marina is, but I know that for a fact. And you should have a 2% reserve every year put away just for repair, constant repairs. And I think 1% a year improvement isn't good in the cash, in the profits. But, I am for the city keeping the marina, it's a valuable asset, and having a management company oversee the marina and keeping it up to speed. If you have somebody who takes a lease and doesn't really own the property and have them improve the property and all, you're just not going to get the same quality as someone who owns your own asset and controlling it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Justice, thank you.
Good evening. Is it evening now? It seems like it. My name is Robert Grice, I live at 125 McKee Lane, Vero Beach, and I'm a part of a group of people that came here, my ancestors prior to 1907. We've been here a long time, and I was born here, my dad was born here, it's no big deal, except we have been here a long time, I've seen a lot of change. Because I always remember the city marina, even as a kid, like Mr. Sykes said, it's a part of Vero, and that's kind of why I'm here tonight. I've served this community in many capacities, both civically and through business, the community, money, and I've served on various boards, including seven years on the county planning and zoning board, seven years on the city marina advisory board, and so, it gives me some credibility, I think. I've cruised the entire state of Florida on the East Coast many times, many times to Key West, and on the West Coast, up as far as Tampa Bay. The Vero city marina is unique, people that cruise know that, and they, I've seen articles in boat magazines about Vero Beach, and it has been a destination, destination many years for the folks that come here. Here's just a few thoughts on the marina, though. The marina, when I was on the marine advisory board, was returning about $100,000 a year to the general fund. And then, it came after I left the marina advisory board, that the then council, like some former other councils, who think they're businessmen, but they're really not, made bad decisions, and that was, I don't know that buying the storage, boat storage warehouse was a bad decision, but the price they paid for it was a bad decision. And then saddling the marina with that cost was an unreasonable expectation, it can't happen. There's, even the facility that you're storing boats in is terrible, I mean, I don't think you can put a boat in there over longer than 20 feet. Most people know money's in boats, comes with bigger boats, not smaller boats. So, the city, since then, you know, so now you see a drain, you see these payments you have to make for this building. And by the way, do you know how we, where that building came from? It was owned by some very rich people who wanted to develop an island up off Johns Island, and that was going to be where they run the ferry, because nobody was going to let them build a bridge. So, the city bailed them out and bought the property, kind of like the Dodgers. And I get upset, because I think I'm a pretty good businessman, and yet I see these kind of decisions, and we won't go into the deals with the utilities in Orlando, but, when I was on the board, when I first came on the advisory board, or the city advisory, marine advisory, one of the first things I asked is, can I see your long-range plan? What does it look like? Well, there wasn't a long-range plan. And it took me literally years to get a long-range plan on. And we did it with the council's approval. And on that long-range plan, which I think is posted near the ballpark now, it shows a lot of the same plan, the boat slips along the other side of the mangroves on Bod Summers Park, with the walk-through, more boats slip, not just for more money, but for some people who cannot live on the water, or trailer a boat, a place to have a boat in Vero Beach and enjoy the waterways. And the argument, well, we're going to look like Fort Lauderdale, well, hell, excuse me, we're not going to look like Fort Lauderdale with a few boats slips on the river. But it would have increased the revenue, whereas the boathouse only became a financial drain. So, after that, the marine advisory, the marina could no longer give money back to the city. And I do agree with, I love to read Jefferson, I'm a big, big fan of his and Freeman, too. But, some of those things you said were not exactly in context with the marina, it's about trying to do too much for the people, instead of letting them do it for themselves, which this company, this country is overloaded with. So, on that long-range plan, that the city council said gave us our blessings, and we spent all this time developing, and then they had a meeting at the city council, no members of the marine advisory committee there, and they summarily dismissed it, because a few neighbors in the neighborhood of the city marina objected to it. One second, I'm out here. So, I resigned from the advisory, and I refused to ever sit on an advisory committee, and I'm not going to sit where you sit, or I'm not going to do it, because all that time was wasted. Final thing, the problem with the city marina, it needs a lot, Lang, you're right, it needs a lot of attention, and how you go about that is not for me to decide. But the problem is, there's been a lack of commitment from the city to support this entity, an entity which used to return money to your general fund, and it can do it again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Grifanti.
Good afternoon again, my name is still Joseph Grifanti, and I still pay taxes to the city of Vero Beach. Apparently, the marina, as it is operated at this time, is generating a positive cash flow, and it has a profit. The problem is, by the way, I admire the guy that just, I don't know who he is, but I admire him for being serious about an issue. You people are fortunate that I don't get serious. You get $100,000 that goes over to the general fund, that's not by mistake, that's by necessity. Most people don't realize it, and you people aren't going to admit it, admit it, excuse me, not omit, but admit it, that the city is in bad financial shape, once you lose the revenue from the power system. Nobody's talking about where the $6 million a year is going to come from, once the $20 million or so, whatever you get out of the end result through the sale, where that money is going to come from. So, the, apparently, the marina has been neglected financially. You've milked that, you've got a goose over there that you've taken the eggs away, the golden eggs, over years, year after year, and neglected to put anything back into it. So, now you claim that the city, the marina is in deplorable condition. I got that word from Lady Clinton, it's in deplorable condition, and you're surprised, or something, maybe you're not surprised, the public might be surprised. But it's a continuation of the mismanagement that I've observed over the last 25 years or more, the Vero Beach, one council after another, has failed the public tremendously. And you may not want to hear this, but people think today, some people think today, that this is the worst council that they've ever witnessed. So, anyway, I just want to let you know that it's being mismanaged, you admitted it, and I don't know what the solution is, that's not my business, because I can't really get too serious. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Grifanti. Thank you, Mr. Gaffanti. Anyone, anyone else? Mr. Johansson.
Mike Johansson, 4506 Bethel Creek Drive. Councilman Moss said what we, most of us feel here already, which is 505 of the charter. It's got 26 properties on it. Yeah, there were exceptions, the dog park, but that's a not-for-profit. The U.S. Sailing Foundation, a not-for-profit. The museum, the theater, not-for-profit. Somebody's for-profit. And we think we should have a voice in that. What we've heard, and we've heard that while there's exceptions, that we decided that the bar is going to be as if it's open to the public. Under that construct, if we built a Sheraton or a Hilton on the three corners, after we abandon that, it's open to the public, they can sign up. I mean, sure, is that where we're going? I don't think the charter intended for us to go there. And I think most of us here agree with that. So what have we heard here today? We've heard that we all agree, there's some things that we all agree on. The Marina is in very bad condition, it's being mismanaged, and the question is, what are we going to do about it collectively? We've heard a solution here proffered that we hadn't considered before. Maybe we ought to take a look at it. Let's forget all the councils and the finger pointing, and you did this, and this council did that, and the other people did this. Let's just, let's just start over. We have a lot of people here, there's a lot of knowledge about Marinas, a lot of sailors are here, a lot of people that are good finance people here, we have a lot of people trying to solve this problem. Certainly, we are all collectively smart enough to solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johansson. Okay, I think I saw someone else who wanted to speak. Good afternoon.
Cheryl Milligan, 4112 Indian River Drive East. I grew up in Vero Beach, and in the 60s and 70s, we used to ski where the boats are docked now. And I've all, I know it's been like that for about 20 years, but I've always thought they didn't belong there. But anyway, that's how it is. And then the word is that in the dog park, I hear that they pay like $15 a day to dock there. And if you go to the boat show or anything like that, most of the boats that you live on are like anywhere between 30 feet and 40 feet, so they're 300,000 to 400,000. So if you go to a big city, you can't even park your car all day for $15 a day. So I think it should be anywhere between 50 and 100. And then another concern is, I mean, I don't know anything about what they're doing at the Marina, but I hear at the dog park, things that are kind of disturbing, like I don't know who checks to see what they do with their waste. But I know I've heard time and time again, most of those boats have dogs, and you ask them, well, how do they go to the bathroom? And I've heard several times, they'll have like a mat on the front of the boat, and then they just rinse it in the water. So that's one concern. And then getting back to the price, I mean, they have transportation, they have the dog park. I just think if we're going to make money, it should be a lot, it should be charged a lot more. And then another really concern, because like I said, I live on Indian River Drive East, and I used to go to the boardwalk, like at 6 o'clock in the morning, between 6:00 and 6:30. I don't do that anymore because I don't feel safe. And I think there is a real problem with this goal line bus, that's a commercial bus. And what happens is, they'll park at Conway and Ocean Drive between 6:30 and 7:00. You never see anybody from the neighborhood get on the bus, because we all have cars. And what you see, I see people that are on US-1 panhandling, they're the ones getting off that bus and going to the boardwalk. And then you'll see homeless people spending the night there. And what they'll do, or they'll get on, because the bus leaves at 7:00. But my suggestion is, it is a commercial bus, this is a residential area, I don't see anybody riding that, except the boat people, you know, that's for them. But what I would suggest is for that bus, when it crosses the bridge, to just go all the way down to Sexton Plaza and let people catch it there. Another, I think it's dangerous, too, you see these people standing behind Beechland School on Indian River Drive East. I think that's, it's a danger to the children. And then it just, anyway, that is, that's a real concern. And then talking about management, I don't know anything about the management, but just common sense, I would, if you were going to pick someone, I would prefer somebody in Sebastian or Florida, not Maryland. We don't want to be like Chesapeake Bay, or, it's a different flavor. We don't want that in our city. So I would prefer someone that, you know, is from Florida, and we want to keep it small, we don't want some big...
I think their manager is from Juneau Beach, so...
Well, he was talking about from Maryland, I heard.
They have...
She would be right.
I'm a sixth generation Florida.
Okay, well, you were talking about Maryland, you didn't have any accounts in Florida?
Yeah, that's where they...
I know, but didn't say...
Ms. Milligan, that's okay, they have businesses everywhere. The manager would be...
All right, I can hear just fine. Didn't you just say that you didn't have any accounts in Florida? I think I heard you say that.
I didn't have any Maryland either.
Ms. Milligan.
All right, just, I'm getting ready to leave, but didn't you...
No, no, here's the problem, this is public comment, and you've got a microphone, and people are going to watch this TV.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
He can't answer questions that you're asking him, nobody's going to hear that.
All right, this is what I heard, okay, this is what I heard him say, is that he did not have any accounts in Florida right now. As a resident, Indian River Drive, for almost 60 years, I would prefer to have somebody that is used to, you know, running accounts in Florida. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Milligan. If I could just get a count real quick, raise your hand if you plan to speak tonight on this matter. We got 1, 2, 3, 4. Let me ask council, usually at two hours, we take 10 minutes, what do you do?
We have 12 more minutes if we have four people.
So what do you want to do?
So I would say, we're not adding anyone else other than these four people. If you haven't raised your hand, you're not going to speak.
It's five minutes on agenda items.
Oh, five minutes? Okay, so maximum 20. Can we just finish it out?
I'm okay with that, if anybody else is. You okay with that? Okay, great. Yes, okay, next, Ms. Frye.
Hello again. I'm always pleased to see younger people here at the meetings, whenever they come, so they can see how civic matters are handled and how government really works. In this matter, I want to preface Mr. Drewett's finer points by saying that if you attempt, you know, to sign any legal documents that would activate a lease for a for-profit business on this Marina, that it would be a violation of the charter, and that you should pay on notice that the public would come forward on this matter and hold you accountable. If you point to the fact about the rowing club, sailing club, obviously they're nonprofits. We are a city of laws, and any loophole that you might use, such as you did when trying to manipulate the charter language by misinterpreting the meaning of the word incidental concession to force for-profit commercial business into river house, would be like trying to thread a needle with a telephone pole. It didn't work then, and it will not work now. This community is united and prepared to hold you responsible should you attempt to lease to a for-profit company without a vote of referendum. And Mr. Keith Drewett, he submitted the plan to, a plan to Mr. Connor on the 13th of July with a follow-up letter. And as Mr. Drewett pointed out, the city does have funds from the sale of the post office and future funds from the sale of Vero Electric to cover all repairs, replacement and upgrades to our City Marina, including all over the water and land facilities. It allows for paying off the Marina debt in full and making the Marina profitable within a brief timeframe. His plan calls for acceleration of loans from the general fund, which can be paid fairly quickly based upon renewed performance, a pay-go approach. The general fund will be repaid dollar for dollar for what the funds would yield invested in the same way as other liquid proceeds from the post office and electric sales. The Drewett plan proves that we can become the best little Marina on the East Coast of Florida. That is our brand. We can keep that brand as a quiet, secluded enclave surrounded by nature and parks and provide first-class amenities. We do not have to give up control of our future to mega-developers or anyone who would violate our charter and turn us into a high-density population area. Thank you.
Ms. Frye, just to be clear for the record, I want everybody else here, I want this to be clear, too, nobody on this board tried to manipulate any words to force a commercial business into any buildings. It was actually just perceived that way. And I believe it's actually blown out of proportion in order to drum up a little bit of hysteria, because really what I was trying to do, and I hope others here were as well, is to give a citizen the opportunity to show us what he was proposing, what he thought was going to be good. We never said we were going to agree to anything.
I respect that, and I just think that we get on a slippery slope when we get into interpretation of the law, which is what lawyers do.
And you're actually accusing our city attorney in the process of that, because we went to him and asked him whether it was appropriate or not.
I'm not accusing Mr. Coleman of anything, so...
Yes, you actually just did.
I'm asking us to please be very careful as we get into these interpretations of the law, because I just think we can do this without having to violate the city charter, which is my hope. That's all.
And I respect that.
Yeah, that's the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frye.
I want to, my name, Arthur E. Cott, Indian River Drive East. I want to give my three copies of two different presentations by Mr. Drewett, that was given to the council, but I want to put those in the public record.
Okay.
Again, Arthur Economy 3598, Indian River Drive East. The City Marina has been poorly operated financially and managerially. Instead of addressing these issues, some council would prefer to lease to a for-profit corporation. Leasing our Marina, McWilliams Park, Vero Beach Dog Park, and the park and the Marina to a private for-profit corporation is not allowed per the language and intended meaning of Section 5.05 of the City Charter. The leasing option by council doesn't include studies showing the impact to the neighborhood, such as increased traffic, noise, and school safety. It doesn't illustrate or define public use, shows no planned oversight to keep the lagoon clean, and doesn't point out the unlimited reach of the Leece to pave and develop all adjacent park property and eliminate all green space. Our Marina is not only a city operation, but also is an amenity closely woven into the park and surrounding community. 50% of the Marina property is itself designated a P2 park. Over 50 homes directly have bought the Marina property and share the same access road. Neighbors, boaters, and visitors frequently walk, jog, bike, kayak, birdwatch, and socialize in these areas. McWilliams Dog Park extends this public use corridor and is a huge amenity to boaters, visitors, and the community. Presently, there's a balance of green space, public use and community, from the Barber Bridge to the Marina. A lease with a for-profit corporation would throw this balance into a death spiral. There is another option. Council and city manager have received Mr. Drewett's detailed and well-thought plan. This approach allows the city to maintain oversight of the Marina while providing a viable working model for financial and managerial success. The city has only to look at the sewer and water utility operation to see a successfully run city enterprise. Mr. Drewett's proposal allows for Marina renovation while being sensitive and inclusive of neighborhood concerns, maintains the present level of public use, and keeps municipal control to keep our lagoon clean. Please preserve our Marina, our community, our green space, our parks, our right to public use, and our control to protect the lagoon. Please respect the intended purpose of all language in Charter Section 5.05, Section 62.63, Section 62.02, and Section 62.09.01. Please consider the proposals submitted by Mr. Drewett and the recommendations of both the Finance and Marine Committees. The community wants to be involved in the success and viability of the city-owned and maintained Marina and parks. Thank you.
Mr. Cott, I don't want to get into a tit-for-tat, I just want to know exactly, I just want some clarification. You were speaking specifically to the Marina proposal, correct? When you speak about green space?
The proposal, whose proposal?
That would have been the Vero Beach City Marina LLC, did I get that right? Which, city, what's it, what was the name?
Kennedy Holdings.
Kennedy Holdings? So, and that would have been Section 7, which the city manager pointed out was actually not even going to be considered. So I think that's definitely a non-issue.
There's a lot of things that weren't brought up to date, but without reading the fine print on all those presentations, I can't say that that's a for-surety.
But... And just, I'm just playing the devil's advocate, just to know if maybe we could agree on one point. Whether it's the city that makes this Marina improved in such a way that it's a much more popular Marina, or if it's a managerial company, don't you think that would probably increase traffic one way or another, no matter who?
Well, let me first say, we have a huge traffic problem in that neighborhood that has not been addressed. So stage one would be corrected traffic conditions in that neighborhood before you do anything. And I call the police department on a daily basis, because we have speeding there, and the police department is limited with their accesses.
I just wanted to know if you, what you're trying to say is, if improvements are made, it's going to increase traffic and safety and increase the lack of safety in that neighborhood?
No, I don't think so. I don't believe that has to be. I think if things are done correctly, methodically studied, and implemented in a very staged manner, I think we can not only improve, but we can solve, we can grow the Marina in a healthy way and solve all the problems if we just slow down and methodically look at things. And like I said, the first thing is a traffic issue. Maybe in this, before we begin this project, we decide what I think needs to be done in that area, some kind of a major traffic calming event that has to be done mechanically. And then after we solve that, we can continue growth in that area.
Okay, and that's what I need, I need a clarification on your thoughts, and that's what I wanted to know. And thank you, you answered my question.
By the way, I'll just say...
You could always close the side streets. Go ahead.
I plan to make a motion today that we do not lease, the city does not lease the Marina. And I do appreciate the vice mayor's bluntness, as he put it, thank you. And I guess we'll ask the city manager...
We're in public comment right now?
Yes, yes, we're still on it. No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, if I'm going to make a motion, then do we have more comment?
Right, right. Well, I don't know what everybody else...
Because for your timeframe, that's all. I'm trying to be respectful.
And I, thank you.
Andrew Kennedy, 3705 Ocean Drive. I missed the earlier part, been running around, so I don't know if, probably recapping is a bad idea. So Central Beach, I live there, three young kids, grew up here. We were a part of the submental Procter Construction, the construction management side. And it's quite exciting, because the gentleman that just said it before, working, collaborating, figuring out, you know, how it can be improved, I think everybody agrees that it needs to be improved, right? We go through this process, a RFP comes out, a lot of time is spent on it. There's no conspiracy theory here, there's no density and, you know, out-of-town mega-developer, it's, you know, family-owned businesses, fourth-generation families that are coming in to make improvements, really, is what it amounts to. I do the business development for Procter Construction. We would oversee the construction management of any improvements that were made. So my big question would be, what is possible and when? And how is that determined? I'm not an attorney. I was excited to get involved in the process. We have Kimley Horn, I think President Peron is going to probably speak as well. Really, really talented people that are in this market, that are in the pursuit of something like this for the right reason. And that shouldn't be overlooked. So if there's a genuine want, desire to partner, public-private partnership to do so, we would, we'd like to do that, and do it for the right reasons. So if you have any questions... So, if you have any questions, just of me and...
Were you, were you not part of the group where Mr. Brackett said that, or, I'm sorry, who was, who was speaking for, Bruce Brackett was representing somebody?
Bruce Barquette.
Bruce Barquette was representing somebody?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Same group?
Same group.
Right. We would be the construction side of that.
Okay.
But I'm looking at this and, you know, hopefully I am characterized as young, the lady that mentioned that earlier. It is a lot to come to three o'clock when you're trying to, you know, do a number of other things. So, I think it's more of a resident. I go by, for example, the Waddell Building, and I think you kind of lower your expectations on it. What could that building be, right? And if it has to go through a charter referendum, part of the reason is when you, when you come to something like this, and it's a lot of work and effort, architectural engineering, time, opportunity cost, et cetera. The submittal went out and we responded to it. And so, you know, I was pretty excited about it until now, I would say. But I think that there's a tremendous amount of potential, and it's, I don't think it's also about one specific thing. It's not about a sailor or a boater, it's not about a dog lover, of which I am, it's about the public benefit for anybody that can come over there and really enjoy the improvements that would be made. And I think there's a lot of work to be done, and that's why we collectively came in to show our interest collectively, again. So, I don't expect I'll get any claps here, but I appreciate the time. And if anything changes.
And I appreciate the fact that you mentioned that out of all the people that we've had make, I don't care which way we go tonight, of all the people, all the people we've had making all kinds of proposals lately, it's all been long-term, third, fourth, fifth-generation people that lived here a very long time. And, you know, we should be able to have, you guys should be able to have a say, at least a proposal, something that you can bring to us as your idea. And I appreciate all of the ideas.
Well, in the municipal, we do a lot of schools, we do a lot of schools in Palm Beach County, and the process is quite unique. And there is a lot of work that goes into it, and then there's a lot of unknown, right? And there's a lot of bantering back and forth, et cetera. But at the end of the day, when you look at the mission statement of the marina, and when you look at its current state, and then you looked at, it's not just a non-for-profit, it's for-profit, but they're taking risk, you know? If you've seen what the Kennedy family has done, and Sebastian, it's really quite remarkable relative to what we're looking at in our own marina. So, I go over, just to be perfectly frank, and I'm disappointed, and that's not, the staff.
For the record, you're a different Kennedy than...
Yeah, unrelated, right. I would be the better-looking brother, though, I would say. So, I would say that the staff does what they can do with what they have, but I take my little three kids over there riding, and of course, my wife, and there's just so much more to it than that. And the reason that we're here as a group, which is all local, Kim Lee Horn, Bruce Barquette, Procter Construction, grandson just started this past June, started in 1976, fourth-generation Kennedy family, is because I think there's a lot of work to be done, and there's a lot of improvements to be made, and there's obviously a willingness to do so on our part. So, if that sentiment changes, and there's a willingness to, you know, look at that in more detail, I would, I would love to be involved, so, thank you.
Thank you.
The way I see this going tonight, and public comment's still going, but the way I see this going tonight, there's only really a few options that it comes down to. Either you accept a proposal tonight, but we had one group that said that they would not be interested in a, in a management structure. We had another group who said they didn't propose in a management structure, so, because they weren't, I guess weren't asked to, but if we allowed them to come back and do that, we would have to allow others to do the same thing unless I'm wrong, right? I mean, wouldn't you have to say, wait a minute, if they get the opportunity again, then other people would have that opportunity as well? So, either...
If you change the rules, you should.
If, yeah. If you change the rules, you should give up, put it out there for an opportunity again, or you just shut it down altogether tonight. So, just, just a heads up, that's kind of the way, what was that, three different ways it could go?
There's a number of ways, but without a doubt.
Mr. Hedy.
Yeah, I'm still Brian Hedy, and I still live in Vero Beach, and I'm always amazed that when you make comments that basically trash public employees, the current city manager and the current head of the marina are operating a business that's generating something in the neighborhood of $400,000 to $500,000 in revenues in excess of expenses, of which $300,000 goes to pay for a boondoggle, and another $100,000 goes into the general funds, but Mr. Zedans says that we shouldn't be in the marina business. Well, he wants us out of the marina business, and he wants to put us into the property leasing business, which, if you look at our history of that, just recently, we owned a piece of property, and we leased it to the federal government, to the post office, and we made, whatever, $100,000 a year. And even the buyer, this city council decided to put it up for sale, even the buyer told you, hey, this isn't a good deal, I'll take it if you want to, if you want to sell it to me, but not a good deal, you should take it and continue the income, Mr. Zedan says. But we're going to own the improvements that, when we, when these improvements are done by the private business, we're going to own them. That's the same snake oil that was sold back in the, in Dodger Town, that lets lease to Dodger Town because they're going to make all of these improvements, and the public's going to own them. And we owned the improvements until they didn't have any value anymore, and then the Dodgers sold it to us as if the improvements had value. And from all reports, those, those structures out there and the improvements are in deplorable shape and need tax dollars to fix. Yeah, and lease agreements, we had a lease agreement over on the corner of Indian River Boulevard and Seventeenth Street, and the city decided to play silly games with the interpretation, and the post office moved out of that corner property and wound up costing us $800,000 because the city attorney's interpretation of the law wasn't quite correct, and they sued us, which lots of people do, we get sued all the time, and it's just, it's just crazy. The marina, the airport property, we seized under eminent domain, and there's lots of areas in the country where we've seen government do that, and then wind up where we, the taxpayers, wind up footing the bill. The Kilo versus New London case, a good example, where eminent domain came in and made a big mess of the property, and now the taxpayers of New London have a big mess on their hands, and have had the mess on their hands for which they pay. The city marina right now is, is making money. The city marina is operating under the allowable parameters that the city council gives to the manager. And if the city council wants to give the manager the permission and the authority and the money to make improvements that you say are needed, then you probably ought to do that. But if you continue to give away all of your income sources, like with the electric, and refuse to tell us, the owners, what the income from sales really is going to do, this is just another heist. It's another way that you people continue to lie, cheat, and steal from the public, and it's deplorable, but you'll get away with it because you'll hire enough lawyers to allow you to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Hedy. Yes, sir. Thank you for your patience.
That's hard to follow. My name is Richard Epps, I live in Falcon Trace. I'm here strictly for the dog park. My understanding was you're planning on taking about half of the small dog park for the marina. If I'm wrong, I hope I'm wrong, but what I'm asking is, it won't cost you a penny, and I would rather say, no, we're not taking the dog park.
We're not, we didn't even consider that option.
What?
That option was not considered.
It was not considered?
It wasn't, no, sir.
You mean I spent two hours wasting my time?
Well, we did, we mentioned it two or three times, I'm sorry that it didn't make it to you, but we did, we did not consider, that was part of the proposal, that city manager, city staff decided would not be an option.
That's probably my fault, I'm hard of hearing anyway, so.
Sorry you had to wait.
Yeah, sorry.
But good news.
It was an interesting meeting.
Yeah.
It was the first one I've been to.
Oh, good. Well, thank you for coming.
Yes, sir.
You have a great day.
You do the same. Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Do you want to close this out then? Because I'd like to make a motion.
I want, I want for city council to, if you have any final words before a motion is made, I do, then now would be the time to do it, and Mr. Zedans, if you want to start down at that end?
Yeah, my, my, I'm, I'm very inclined, as you probably could have figured out, to, to continue to negotiate the lease with the Kennedy proposal. There are some issues with the way the lease was presented, I think that, that are negotiable, like the amount of the lease, I think, should be higher. The, and there are some other details about things like parameters for how fuel rates are set, and some other things that would ensure that we're not going to have, that we're not going to be out of the norm for other local marinas for rates for rentals and things like that. There are several other little smaller items that I am interested in, that I don't think that the deal is in a position where I would vote for a final deal yet. But I do think that if we, I understand the sentiment that we can do this ourselves, and I even heard some people, I heard some feedback from people on the Marine Commission that they really liked the Kennedy proposal, but they think that we can do it ourselves. My experience is, and my belief is, that we can't. And we've, we've tried, and we've given lots of opportunity, and, and I look back to, like, the bathroom repairs and things like that, and I look at, and how much it costs, and how it doesn't happen, and I'm sorry, but the government does not run things like, like private enterprise runs things. And I'm not against the profit motive. I think there's a good thing about the idea that everyone benefits. The city gets their revenue, and a business is successful in our community, and the business has every incentive to do everything that the city says they want to do because they want customers to come and utilize their marina. And so, I believe in capitalism, and so I believe that a public-private partnership is the way that will actually solve this problem. If we don't do something like this, I can, I can pretty much guarantee you, two years from now, our marina will be no better than it is right now. And I don't like the idea of, it's already starting to happen, that people are saying, oh, we're going to get this money from the electric, and we'll just use this money for this and that and every little pet project. I'm very concerned that not just this city council, but future city councils are just going to raid that money, and that, whatever excess money that hasn't been spoken for, for, I mean, we have people talking about spending the money from the post office, we already decided that that money is going to go into lagoon projects. And so, any extra money that hasn't been spoken for, it's not going to pension funds, it's not going to the soft landing for how we transition, should go into an emergency fund that should be clearly labeled. Our city should have some financial conservatism where we actually set aside money, and we put that to things. We have a solution to our current situation. We have a solution that is going to improve our city marina, improve our amenities, become an excellent gateway to our community, make us proud, and it doesn't cost us anything. And all those upgrades end up reverting back to the city at the termination of the lease. I mean, if this is not a good government type of solution to this problem, I really don't know what is. And so, I'm, I'm pretty adamant, as you can tell, and I think this is the right thing to do, with some negotiation of the terms of the lease.
Thank you. Councilman Young?
If you, if you look at the marina and the significance it has to this town, and then say that the city has the inability to effectively run a marina, then I would argue likewise, the city doesn't have the expertise to run an airfield, the city doesn't have the expertise to run a water and sewer water production facility, the city doesn't have the expertise to run up buildings and grounds, the city doesn't have the expertise to do a host of things. And that is counter to what we have seen in this city. And I'm likewise an adamant individual that believes that the marina can and should be in better condition. However, again, it comes down to the resolve of this body in front of you to make that happen. And when we say that we don't want to raid the profits or the money revenue generated from the sale of the city electric, all along, it has been a part of that plan to defray some of these debts, and this is one of them. So, there's no change to that. So, the, so the, so the, really, the question of the matter comes down to, do we have the faith in our own staff and our council to adhere to something that the citizens of this community has said that is important? There are 412 communities, cities, villages throughout the state of Florida. The city is the basic fundamental government structure that was built by the people. The people of Vero Beach has said, it is important for us to have a marina. People of Vero Beach have said, it's important for us to have neighborhoods, it's important for us to have an airfield. Now, for five of us to run counter to that because the city has not had the resolve to provide for the capital improvements for the marina is a mistake.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Bush?
Thank you.
Can I add a few thoughts?
Pardon me?
I just wanted to add a few.
Well, I think I've already stated my case by and large, although I appreciate, you know, your, the other concerns that have been raised, but I do want to make a motion tonight, just, I'm not going to make it this minute, don't worry, I know we're having council discussion first, but I do want to make a motion, just to take the leasing option off the table, just that we're not leasing it. And then, I understand you don't perhaps, I'm hopeful, by the way, that we can do it ourselves. I really believe that we have, we have the talent, we have the energy here. I think in the past, yes, it was, it was short-changed, but I believe it's, it will receive the attention it deserves. I really believe that, and I think, I said earlier, I appreciate vice mayor's concerns about the staff, and I think the city manager's aware of that, and can come back to us with his suggestions, or we can look at, you know, management. I prefer the city myself, but that's, as I said, I'm just stating my, my own opinion, and thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to add a few things. You know, it's, it's frustrating and unfortunate that it seems like this issue is so black and white. It almost seems like people think, well, the marina is just going to go away, we're not going to have a marina anymore. And that's just not the case. We're just trying to figure out a better way to have a better marina. You know, by and large, this is 100% a management issue. You know, unfortunately, there, unfortunately, our city's been around for a long time, there have been, you know, countless councils before us that have made decisions, and unfortunately, we're strapped with the decisions of the past. All we can do is try and move forward to the best of our ability. You know, I don't think, like most all of these issues, this is not coming out of thin air. This is something that's been discussed while I've been on council over the last two years. And, you know, I feel as though we have given adequate opportunity to the current management to come up with a plan to help us improve this. We've asked for a business plan, took a long time to produce, what was given back to us wouldn't pass muster in, you know, a middle school business class, if there is such a thing. And so, I'm very concerned about how the marina is currently operated. You know, this is coming from someone that uses this facility on a very regular basis. I fill up there all the time. In fact, I prefer to fill up there to contribute to the city rather than going to Como or anywhere else. It's, it's a privilege to be able to do that, but, you know, when you have a complete lack of management running the place and lines backed up with people trying to get fuel... people trying to get fuel, um, you know, this is a more complicated solution than, uh, I think we're giving a lot of credence to. Um, you know, simply raising the fees is not the answer. Um, and, you know, one of the reasons that this marina is so special isn't because of the little building that's sitting there on the end of the dock, it's because of the topography of the river and the way that the islands are situated and the way that you have shelter, and the reason that people come from all over to use that harbor during a hurricane. Um, that's what makes it special, not the building that's falling apart there currently, or the bathrooms that, you know, have been waiting for a redo forever, or the facilities or the coin lot. That's not what makes this special. Um, I think we need a real plan to understand what the future of that marina looks like, to understand how we make it better. Um, you know, this isn't a slight against any boaters, but, you know, inherently, sailboaters are, are not people that generally want to spend a lot of money. And that's just, that's very true. Um, you know, motor boaters and people who have yachts, maybe that may be different. But we need to look at this as, what's the best plan moving forward? How do we have something that we can operate and make money? Um, you know, I think there was a great example given with Rob Bolton coming in and turning around, you know, water treatment and, and the water facility. But, you know, there's not a thousand Rob Boltons out there that understand, you know, the marina the way that he understands water and sewer. And so, my suggestion here is, um, not to kill the opportunity to look at, you know, leasing this, um, but to really look at the proposal for, um, outside management, um, which we heard is an option. I'd love to see something there. Um, I, I would love to see what more details look like on, you know, a potential lease agreement here. Whether we do it or not, um, you know, it's preliminary stages. Um, but in any case, we're not losing a marina, we're just trying to figure out how to make it better. And, and so, that's, you know, kind of the frustrating part here is, we don't have a lot of money to spend on this marina. And so, you know, I, I agree with Councilman Zudans that we, we can't, you know, go to the coffers of profits from this sale every time there's something that needs, you know, capital improvement. We have to figure out how to let these things stand on their own, as you would in any business. Um, and so, you know, I'd like to look at proposals that get us closer to doing that in a quicker timeframe, um, than talking about, you know, how we run this thing i-in perpetuity. Um, and so, I think we still need more, more information. And, you know, I'm not willing, of course, to, to finalize any sort of lease agreement at all. I'd like to still understand the rest of our options, um, before we make a decision on anything.
Just, just a, a minor point. Rob Bolton's name's been sort of kicked around here. He's been with the city over 20 years. The fact of the matter is, until we released him to do the improvements, we were getting criticism on the water and sewer department. And, and we were taking a lot of hits, and that's when the, that was right before I came here, where the county was going to come in and pay us a dollar and take it over for the debt service. And at that time, it was perceived that we had some serious concerns and, and problems with the water and sewer. Rob was there at the time, but with the council gave me the authority, we started spending money on that, that facility, those facilities. And that's what changed. Rob always had the technology and the, the mindset of what to do, he just didn't have the authority to spend the money. So, I, I just want to make sure that we all know, Rob Bolton didn't start here seven years ago.
Sure. Um, and, and my point to, to the earlier issue in giving current management a chance is, you know, I, I love this proposal that was submitted, um, you know, by Mr. Drewitt. He brings up a lot of great points in there. Um, but a lot of these things he's bringing up, aside from the capital improvements, don't cost a lot of money. And it's not something that was ever presented or acted upon. You know, if, if we knew that the marina was in the state that it was, even from an advertising standpoint, you know, why not take advantage of all these free services over the years? That's a frustrating thing.
And I agree. And I think it is very frustrating, and I do take responsibility. The management is my responsibility. We had an operational manager and not a capital investment manager. And so, I think from a perspective, as been pointed out, our marina manager did what he was requested to do, keep the marina operating, return the money back to the city, the $100,000, and pay off the debt service. And that's in essence what he did. We cut the, the staff down there. At one time, there was like four people for the whole thing. And you're right, there is a long line when you have one guy doing, pumping gas or something. And then, he's also the guy that pumps out the bilge pumps and all these other things. But it is one of those, and, and that's why I said early on, no matter how we do this, we're going to have to commit capital to make that happen.
So, from, from my, the, the, the good thing about going last is you don't have to reiterate what everybody else said. So, um, I philosophically and wholeheartedly agree with Councilman Zudans, uh, has professed us tonight. If, if it's the, in my mind, it is not the city's business to be in the business of running a marina. That said, um, if, if we had had somebody come to us, um, either, either on a lease or on a management structure with a grandiose idea that really was going to be a game changer for the marina, um, I would probably be more apt to, uh, to jump on board with that. But currently, what I see is something that's either a zero-sum game or, or not quite a zero-sum game, which I can't be in favor for. If it's the council's pleasure tonight to seek, um, a management structure, um, certainly, we, we already heard Oasis said, well, you know, wait a minute, it wasn't clear to us that we could give you that side of the proposal too. If that's the route we're going to take, we have to open it back up for others to give a management, uh, kind of structure as well. So, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. But, um, just based on what I've heard tonight, nothing has been convincing enough to me to award anything to anyone. So, um, that said, I think everybody's spoken their mind, and I think that Councilwoman Moss wanted to...
Yes, I think I'll, I'll just clarify first, or make sure that I understand, that, um, leasing is different from a management company. And that's why we're saying we'd have to go back out. So, you know, my motion just has to do with leasing only. It doesn't, I mean, I think it's fine to go back out and look into management, uh, services. I mean, I'm hopeful that the city, that we can do it ourselves. But if we can't, if we decide as a council that we can't do it ourselves, based on what city manager brings back to us, then we certainly should consider management services. But they're two different things, leasing, um, versus management services. So, I'm not eliminating management services. I'm sorry for losing my voice, but I, you know, I'm, I appreciate everything that each one of the, uh, council members has had to say. The Moss and I...
Wait, let me just add one. I would, I guess I would add to that is, if, if you, you feel the temperature of the council tonight, we're not voting on anything, you know, why put a kibosh on the opportunity to further explore? Because even to your point, wh-whatever side of the argument you're on, or whatever you think, even if we were to go to do a referendum vote to lease the thing, you still need the information. You know, it would be in the city's best interest to have the information of what that looks like prior to doing a referendum vote.
Well, we got the information on leasing. This...
I would just add that, that even I said that I didn't agree with the, the terms that were presented, and it's along the lines of what the mayor said, that, um, he wanted to see something that was more positive towards the city. I, I concur with that. But I think that to just shut that out and say, okay, we're not going to consider leasing anymore, there may be a lease term...
That's my...
Yeah, there may be lease terms that actually are favorable. And so, I would be opposed for that, exactly that reason too, the idea that you, you don't consider leases anymore. That's sort of just like closing off one of your negotiation tax.
Well, then if we're, if we are, as a council, going to keep this open to proposal from either management or less C structure or both, then we don't need to make a motion to kibosh one or the other. We need to just instruct the, um, city manager to do so.
And I think that's what I hear, is that we should instruct the city manager to request businesses to come with proposals on management.
And, and to improve the terms of the...
And if you find somebody that has the, the better terms of lease than somebody...
Yeah.
Thank you. Yep.
And if it, and if it comes back, uh, several months from now, whatever the case may be, if it comes back and we're still in the same position with a zero-sum game, okay, now we're done.
Well, just as an aside, it's not really, a zero-sum game is not a zero-sum game because they're talking about putting $3 million or $5 million of capital into our city marina to, and, and if you look at the pack and you look through there, they have like the reports of some of this stuff. We have some potentially structural, um, issues that could be within the next year or two that we're talking about, you know, a million dollars of expenses that, we're not talking about just fixing this up and making it better and improving it, like they're talking about extending docks, adding wet slips. Just keeping it functional. The gentleman earlier said that the average life of a marina, I think he said it was 30 years. This marina is, um...
Well, that's 50 plus?
No, 40 years was what he said. 46 or something? Or, anyway, we're beyond the, um, probably beyond the useful life of this marina. So, it's not just a, um, if you, if you take that, say that you're, you're amortizing the $5 million over 10 years or whatever it is, that's another $500,000 a year of capital expenses. So, part of, like, when the, I, I look at the example of the, um, the hospital, um, and getting Cleveland Clinic to come in, they, they gave, they didn't pay any money to the hospital district in order to, they didn't really buy the house. They buy the, um, the hospital, they...
They bought the use.
They substituted into the current lease, basically, which is no rent lease. But they made a capital commitment of $250 million over the next 10 years, that our community is going to benefit from, uh, dramatically improving that and bringing Cleveland Clinic into our community, which is going to be some pretty phenomenal stuff. This is not Cleveland Clinic, and this is not the hospital, but this is a similar kind of capital investment intensive structure that our entire community is going to utilize. So, you can't, you have to, you do, you do have to look, and I do think that it should be at least even on cash flow compared to what we're doing right now. But at the same time, you have to also consider the value of the capital investment they're going to make that we don't have to make as a city, and we own when this lease is over. So, I, I, I look at a little bit bigger picture on that. And the only reason why I thought we couldn't do a management agreement is because, um, I didn't think that someone, without a long-term lease, where they can recoup their, their capital investment, I didn't think that management companies are willing to do that. But we, there's a little bit more to that that we learned about tonight.
Fair enough.
You might, you know, you may not be aware of it, but, um, I've heard from different people in the community, actually quite a number of them, that this council is viewed as not coming to closure on things. We raise up an issue, um, a lot of people get upset, and I'm not, you know, the marina, parking, other things, and we don't come to closure on it. Um, I sincerely believe that section 5.05 protects this property from leasing. Um, you've already heard it raised as a, as a legal issue by the community, by the city, uh, that owns the marina, the people. And that's why, I just want to take the leasing portion of it off the table. So, you know, we can have a, a, a serious, calm discussion about how we should actually run it. Should, should it be run by, by city manager, or should it be run by a management, uh, you know, consulting service? Uh, but either way, it's not, it's not a lease. So, that's, that's all I'm talking about. Um, so, I, I, I'll just make the motion, that's what, this is what I believe it says, that I make, my move that the city not lease the municipal marina as defined in Vero Beach Code, Section 5.05, property number nine. That's it.
And that I, I second the motion.
Okay, so, let's take a vote on that motion. Um, all in favor?
Do a roll call.
Yeah, let's do a roll call. Please.
Daxi Zudans?
No.
Colonel Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sykes?
No.
Mayor Howell?
No.
Motion fails, three to two.
So, so I'd like, what I'd like to do is instruct the, uh, city staff to just continue.
Okay. Let me try to figure out what we need to do. We have some issues we need to address down there right now. And so, if the city council wants to go through, and I guess we're doing another RFP, is that what we're proposing, to have people come back in with lease proposals and management proposals?
Well, I would say yes, sir. Um, Oasis, for one, didn't get the opportunity for one reason or another to give us a management proposal. And I think if they have, if they get to do it, somebody else can get to do it.
Yeah, there, there's a couple of management firms out there. There's one out of Cocoa Beach that have shown an interest, have been down here. But that takes time. If the city council would allow me to maybe do a short-term management agreement with someone, so we can get and recognize what the issues are and sort of do those, and then we can go through whatever processes you want to. But somewhere, I've got to get something in there. And I can't go out and hire staff when nobody knows if we're going to actually be in the marina business. I've got to be able to...
Right. I'm confused as to what you're asking.
I'm asking if they, if I could get a short-term managing company that might come in there for a short-term, just to oversee it, maybe give us the business plan that you all wanted, uh, maybe evaluate some of those...
I'm confused. We're, we have people working there right now.
We do. And what you're doing is saying that they don't know if they're going to be working there for a longer term, A, and number two, they're operational people. What we're talking about is capital and evaluation people that we want to go into that, the marina.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, while, while, while we're trying to get these proposals, things are going to continue to deteriorate, because you don't want to throw...
I, I do not, the people we have there now are operational people. They can tell you how to operate and run the, the, the operation, but they're not going to give us all the other...
Do you really think we're going to make short-term, um, major capital improvement plans?
I think we will identify some that would, we'd be more knowledgeable about them, as opposed to taking a proposal that someone is showing us. But the, yes, sir, I do think we could identify, if we had a skill...
From your point, they're working for us at that point, right, to, to give us a comprehensive list of everything that could, should be done with the marina.
Which is what we've been looking for.
Which is what we've been looking for. But, but my point is, is that down the line, regardless of which avenue you go, whether the city maintains control and runs the thing, or you end up doing a management, uh, proposal, or you end up leasing it, we still need to know from our perspective and have an agreement on what it is that needs to be done.
We do not have the skill set to do what you're wanting to do.
Uh, wait a second. I, I actually, what I want to do is not to, I actually, okay, as far as the amount of time that it, that it takes to ask for additional management plans, what kind of timeframe would you be giving on an RFP?
Probably take us, uh, three weeks to get the RFP out, give 30 days for responses. You're talking sometime in February.
I, I, I don't quite understand why it would take three weeks to get an RFP out when it's basically just the same RFP we just did, but for management agreements as opposed to, um, a lease.
I certainly think the holidays are a slow thing out here.
Excuse me?
Christmas ad years are rolling around. I mean, it's not, we could put out the same thing we did yesterday and put it back out, but that, I don't think that's what you're after.
Well, I'm not, I don't understand the difference. Besides, besides offering, asking people to, no, I'm, I'm honestly asking you a question. What is the difference between asking for the same solution but with a management agreement as opposed to a lease? I don't think that's any different than the RFP we just put out.
Yes, sir, it is.
What's the difference?
But you have to define what you want in this management. Uh, in other words, in the lease, we define that we would, A, take a long-term lease if we consider the lease. We wanted their background on what they, the activities they've done. And if we do the management on top of that, we would want to know what their skill sets are, we'd want to know what their experience has been in these...
Didn't we ask for all those same things for the lease?
Just for the lease, yes, sir. But the, you're, there's going to be two different groups bidding on this. Out of the 24 people that we identified, about half of those were just in the management.
Okay.
And we brought the management, a, a company here, a year and a half ago, or whenever it was, that had come down, done an evaluation. I think each council member's received a copy of that. And they showed you exactly what that management...
Okay, so even on that timeframe, though, three weeks and, and 30 days to respond, is still, um, I don't, I don't see the value of hiring a, uh, a manager, a short-term manager for two months of delay. Hopefully, this is not more than two months of delay. I, I don't quite get the, I don't quite get what we're trying to accomplish.
I, what I'm trying to accomplish is to understand when they say this needs to be done, that we actually believe it needs to be done.
Or that they can identify what it needs to be done.
Was any of that stuff in the proposal from the previous management company that presented? I mean, I know it's out of date, but...
Yeah, well, it is out of date, but, yeah, it was pretty comprehensive, that management proposal that we got from the other company. I mean, it was very extensive. But you got to go out and make contact with these people in order to get them engaged. It's not like running a newspaper ad and hoping somebody...
No, I, I understand. And, and you say it takes three weeks to put together the RFP, and you're going to give a one-month delay. I don't think we need to be hiring other people in the short run when, when this is a two-month decision. And doing basically what they're going to come in, we're going to, depending on what proposals we get, they're going to tell us what they think needs to be done, and we can look at the different proposals.
we can look at the different proposals and compare them.
After our marina manager's taken the meeting tonight, if he decides to retire, what do we do then? There is no way to hire somebody that's going to come in here thinking that they're not going to have a job. Uh, and that may not happen. They, so be it, we'll put out the RFP and we'll do it, like you say, we'll bake it bare bones and come out and presentations can be made. I have no problem with that. I'm just saying that, you know, we, we keep putting this off, and right now I do not have the skill sets down there to carry out what we see as our problems. A, making the capital, proposing the capital projects that are there and, uh, doing the, the other work that needs to be done. We can operate it and we can continue to do what we're doing and so be it. And then we'll put out the RFPs and bring those back. Do you want that advisor, you want that committee to review those, or you want the city council to do the interviews?
Jim, also, it seems to me like there's two different classifications of management here. You know, the Oasis gentleman that spoke, um, he talked about making capital improvements under that particular structure of which he preferred. And then there's just getting someone to run the marina, and we fund everything else.
That's correct.
So I would like to see what, you know, to be able to juxtapose those two and see what the real difference is.
I, I personally am not interested in a manager who's not going to make the capital improvements. Um, that's just my opinion, that you have, and really, to be honest, that a, a management agreement with, um, capital improvements.
Is a lease.
Is the same thing as a lease.
Yeah.
Okay? And, but the, actually, the lease has an advantage because the lease, they're, they have the liability. With the management agreement with capital improvements where it's on us, we have a liability. So as a city, we're better off on a lease than we are in a management agreement with, um, with capital improvements. If you're not going to do the, if the management, the, the management agreement does not include capital improvements, then it's, then we're not solving our problems. We want to actually improve, we want capital investment in our city marina, and we don't want to have to take the risk or pay for it. I mean, that's what we're talking about.
That is a lease.
That is a lease. So, I mean, to be honest, my opinion is that we should try and negotiate the lease, the best lease, the local lease, the person who, the, our marine commission preferred, that ranked the higher, the, the version that did not include the things that are politically toxic, like putting a parking lot in the, uh, in the dog park, okay? But the other version that was on the same fingerprint, footprint? And I think we should, I personally think we should see whether we can get to a, get to terms where we actually, it's not a negative or it's better, the same or better than a, um, break even.
So let's take it out, like I said 20 minutes ago, we'll get somebody to come back with a RFP, and if they can bring us something to the table that actually helps us, helps the city in a big way. In other words, so that we don't have to go get that million bucks because that building is to be demolished and rebuilt. Fantastic. If not, then we say, okay, we tried, and that's it.
So actually, what I'm saying is that you have someone who did a 132-page presentation, who actually did all the homework and made all the presentation, and the, the, the only issue really is the terms of that lease. And so the other option is you go and you negotiate with that person and see if you can come to terms with the current offer, to negotiate the current offer to the point where it's actually an acceptable offer to you and to the majority of this council. I personally, that's what I would prefer that we do tonight, and then we're not kicking this thing down the road and other, you know, it'll never happen. It'll never get fixed.
Can I throw one thing out there? It's consideration. If you lease, this currently non-taxed marina will become taxable, and your tenant's going to be paying adwarem taxes. If you just hire a manager, I stress, may, may still remain non-taxed. So your, your lessee is going to have to include in their costs adwarem taxes. So that is one consideration.
I didn't even know that. That's another reason to lease to a for-profit. Um, can you, uh, would you do me a favor and call the property appraisers office and ask them how they're likely to, um, to rule if it's, um, if there's a manager involved, a for-profit manager?
We, we can look into that.
Thank you.
Sure. You know, and additionally to it, and to your point, Councilman Zudans, you know, they, whatever other party doesn't have to agree to it, but we can certainly dictate the terms. You know, I mean, if we, if we want to lease the thing and found someone that would say, oh, yeah, we'll keep it the exact same condition as it is now, um, you know, I, I'm being facetious, of course, but you, my point is, we can say, no, you know, these are the parameters of which you can operate in. If that's untenable for you, then we won't, you know, do the deal with you. We can keep the thing, what we want, and as we call Vero Vero, we, we can still have, achieve those things through this vehicle.
Do we want to just negotiate with the recommended?
Well, yeah, I thought that was part of this, is.
That's what, that's what I would prefer personally, is that I would prefer, rather than even go in the RFP route, is to actually negotiate with the Kennedy proposal to see if we can get to, um, better terms on that deal and, and explicit capital commitment within certain periods of time, uh, more, a little bit more detail on what kind of, um, you know, things like the clean marina. I know that their marina up in, um, in Miko has, uh, got all, got all three of like the major clean lagoon designations, things that we don't even have. Some of the things that they're going to commit, that they're going to maintain so that we have a better understanding of, of what we're getting. I mean, I, I don't know, that's not, that's the opposite of what Councilman Moss was suggesting, but that's what I think is the right thing to do if we want to do something. I'm, I'm kind of like in favor of action.
To me, that, i- if we're going to lease it, whether we call it a management or however we do it, then you've got two proposals that came in here. And so we ought to pursue those. They've, both of them, and the one that is being the high score here, we start with that one and try to negotiate the deal and see how good of a deal we can get. I'll bring that back to you, and then you can take that under consideration.
That's my, that's my recommendation or motion.
We got to do something, and if you want the city to operate it, then we will get in there and start operating it. But I can't, I, I don't have the adequate staff to operate the marina as it is today. And as we sit here and debate if we're going to be in the marina business, you can't go out and get adequate staff.
Sir, are you, are you one of the, are you one of the bidders?
Yes.
Okay. Um, let's, let him, let him, he's got something to say, so.
Hi, my name is Prostid Perone. I'm the one who authored the RFP response on behalf of the Kennedys. Uh, what Dr. Zudans has been saying here about calling the people in and sitting down and talking about, uh, what changes they might make in the proposal, we're, we're more than welcome to do that. We've been waiting and hoping that that would actually happen. Uh, but we were unable really to speak with anybody, uh, at the city or involved in the selection process. We were hoping that today, that that's what was going to be decided, that you would move forward to talk with the high-scoring Kennedys. We, we are very capable of, of restoring this marina to its one-time grandeur. Uh, we are willing to work with you in any capacity. Uh, we've heard many of the rumors going around the city for the past month and a half about what we are going to do to destroy their marina. Uh, it's a bunch of crap, to be honest with you. We are not going to take down all the trees, all the oak trees. We are not invading the dog park. In fact, we, we took great care to move our parking facility, which were required incidentally if we were to have added additional slips in the South Basin to provide parking for that. But we moved that way down south, uh, outside the parameters of, of the dog park, uh, because we are sensitive to what goes on in Vero Beach. We've all lived here most of our lives. Uh, I've been in and out of Vero Beach for 35 years. Uh, the Kennedys have been here since 1909, I think in maybe 1907. Uh, the Proctor people have been here since the mid-'70s. Uh, we, as we mentioned several times in our proposal, we're local, we know the people who live in Vero Beach, and we have respect for their, their, their feelings about the marina, about the park, about the ball field, uh, about the rowing club, uh, all the things associated with, with that site. And, uh, we don't intend to infringe upon that. Uh, and if, and if we do, we want to hear about it, and we'll work something out. Uh, if we could come back in and, and talk to you about some alternative proposals or some variations from our existing RFP response, we're, we're, we more than welcome that.
I appreciate that.
That ought to be one of your third alternatives here, where you talk about whether we lease, whether we do it ourselves or whatever. Um, but, but we are ready to do whatever we have to do to make this work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'd just like an aside, a comment about like what went on with the hospital and the, the lease and all that. There was a lot of concern, um, at the, on the hospital district and at the hospital about what was going to happen, no matter which of the, the, the four final suitors they had that came in were making proposals to do a long-term lease on the hospital. And so their contract is very complex, and it has a lot of, um, requirements, like, things like you can't stop providing the unprofitable service lines, like psychiatry and OB-GYN and things like that. And they have a commitment for like a, you know, built into the contract. And those are the kind of things that, that a carefully constructed lease agreement can, and to make sure that the capital improvements that we're expecting are, are in there and are within a certain timeframe and, and that they're, these are all terms that can be in agreements to allay a lot of the, um, the fears. What people, the reason why people fear things is they fear the unknown. They don't, they assume, there's a natural tendency for human beings, when there's an unknown, to assume the worst-case scenario. And so part of our job and part of our city manager's job, when we're, when we're sitting down and we're negotiating terms for a contract, is to address all these fears that people have presented. Um, it's not, you, you have to do all that in order to get a deal that's in the best interest of our community. And that's part of what I was talking about, that it's not, it, the, the financial terms are one thing, but also we don't want the rates for the city marina to go, to be different, you know, outside the range of what is typical for other local marinas for dry storage and, and docks and fuel prices and things like that. And that should all be part of a lease, that there's some benchmark that it has to be within a range of. And I think those are terms that are very important, that are non, non, just basic financial. So my, 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 my suggestion and my motion is that, um, we instruct the city manager to negotiate with the, the top-scoring proposal, um, the Kennedy group, and see whether or not we can come to terms that, um, that everyone agrees to.
I, I would support that, but I would also say, you know, at this stage, since, um, there's more that needs to be done, and I'd also like to see him follow up with.
And we're still open, until we have a signed deal, we're still open to any, um, offers that come in the door, and we should make that known, that until we close or have a final deal, or there, there is no deal. And the people in negotiating should understand that as well. I put some, uh, leverage on the Kennedy group to come to good terms because they know that we're also considering other options. If something better comes along in the meantime, we will consider it.
Well, are we considering all three options, or do you not have enough money to do that, city manager? Is that, you know, do you, do you have the funding to really look at all three options? That is, the city runs it, a management group runs it, or it's leased? As I understand it, those are the three options. And were you saying earlier you did not have sufficient funding?
No, funding is not an issue as much as, this thing's got to be managed while we're doing it, and then I think the council said they want to see some improvements made. For example, we were talking about it's only half-painted or something, that, you know, I've got to have somebody that can come in and get those type of things done. But I could put that in a band, if I'm negotiating a contract that we can bring back and we're somewhat assured that we're going to have a contract. To go out with another RFP, we go through this, we have several companies that come in here, make presentations, and, and we get ourselves in a quandary again, and six months from now, we're still doing what we're doing. If you want me to negotiate a contract with the high scoring on this, we will do that. If you want the city to stay in the marina business, we will do that. But I, I need to have what the course is that we're doing.
I personally would like you to negotiate a contract and, and in the meantime, make it known that we're still accepting offers up until the time that, that we, um, that that contract is finalized. It's sort of like, there's a, we have an offer, but it's not under contract.
Well, are we, are we going to make it known that we're looking for a management?
I think we should, I think we can.
The problem is, you've gone through a procurement process, and now if you're going to go off on some other tangent, I mean.
There's, there's no tangent.
You're affecting the current procurement process that certain people have responded to. They have certain rights based on what was put out as an RFP. I mean, you're opening yourself up to potential liability for not sticking with the RFP you've put out. If you want another RFP, I mean, you, you're creating an issue here for potential bidders, or bidders that have already presented.
Okay, I'm not, I was not unaware of that.
You stick to one course or the other.
So if that's the case, then, um, we've come to no conclusion tonight.
Wait, wait, wait. There's no reason why we can't keep negotiating the, the, the offer that we had, the top-scoring offer. That's my recommendation. And then, that doesn't mean that it's going to come back with something that's approved by the majority of the city council.
What, what's, what I'm hearing is your recommendation that we continue with the best, uh, the highest score and bidder. That's course of action one. Course of action two is to go down the avenue, which is what I've supported, is to look at a management, uh, firm that would, could come in here and give us some recommendations on that. And that's a separate course of action.
I think that's what Wayne is trying to advise us on, is that we, there'd be some liability there.
If, if you could do another RFP for management, but, or do a combination, give us your best presentation of, leave it open to either leasing or management.
Okay, well, if we can do it, I think that's what we agreed earlier.
Probably what you'd have to do to have it clean, if you're going to start over, is to just reject all bids and start over.
All right. So let me, let me offer another option, okay? That is, that you, you continue to negotiate with the lease from the higher bidder for now. You, um, in the meantime, in the event that that doesn't.
In the meantime, you should negotiate.
Okay, negotiate that, and then.
Back to you all, you.
And, and can you not negotiate multiple, with multiple parties at the same time? You want to pick one and?
Well, you've already picked.
You only have two.
I could pick, I could negotiate with both of these firms if you wanted me to. I mean, but you're down to two firms on your RFP process.
Correct. Yeah, and that's what I meant with, with both firms.
Yeah, you could do both firms, yes.
Certainly, yeah. You could do, find out what the best deal is from each.
Okay. Then that, that's what I would like to do, and I'll, I'll tell you why, and the reason is that if you can come, in, in a management agreement with a capital commitment, an associated management agreement, is not as good for the city as a lease agreement with a capital commitment, in my opinion, because of the liability.
If you're waiting, are you waiting to speak? Because public comments close now.
Um, so I think it's better to see whether or not you can get something with one of the two people who responded to the RFP for a lease, and I have no problem with negotiating with both of them, to see which one the best you can get is. And then if that fails, then we can go back and just do the management by itself. But my preference would be for a lease, so let's see what the best deal we can get on a lease is. It doesn't hurt us to do that.
Well, then we, but then we don't know about the management services, and we agreed earlier, we were all interested in that.
Yes, but then we learned that it's actually for liability, the liability is on us when you have a management agreement with capital. If you don't want capital, if you just want a management agreement and you don't want them to pay for the capital commitments, then yes, maybe it's worth looking at a management agreement.
I don't think we're prepared to make that decision tonight, just to discard that in its entirety. It hasn't been looked at at all, and we all. It hasn't been looked at at all, and we all were interested in it earlier, and I think I still am.
I am, yeah.
So, and I think it's only fair to the community that we, you know, we take, oh, this is a, this is a really big decision. I don't think you just toss it, I don't think you toss it off that way.
I personally would like to know what we can get on the lease, because in my understanding of it, the lease, the lease is a preferable structure.
They said they'll pursue that. I'm talking about in addition to that. So you'll have what you want. This is a separate, as I understand it, a separate line of inquiry. There's no legal problem.
Here's what it looks like in a management structure, and here's what it looks like in a...
Let me ask a hypothetical here.
Side-by-side comparison.
If you were to, if you were to kill the current version of the RFP, that doesn't affect the proposals that either Oasis or Vero Beach LLC have submitted to date?
I mean, all they have to do is resubmit, right?
They could resubmit.
This is exactly...
So if you, if you kill the current one and you put, "We're looking for management proposals and lease proposals," then they're already, you know, they've already done their due diligence, they've already done the work, they're not changing much, they can revise it.
They would have to just resubmit.
Sure.
You know.
So that seems to me to be the way to get the answers without the liability, right?
That would be cleaner.
Yes, just a clean new set of paperwork. But it doesn't affect the work that any of these guys have put in date.
They might modify after...
They could modify it, sure.
And that'll be, that can be negotiated after the fact.
So we can still look at everything, including if Mr. City Manager would like to be part of this, we're still happy to hear from you. So not, I mean, not this evening, but you know, you can sleep on it. Okay?
I've just tried to follow the bouncing ball. What you all want to do is we're going to reject these bids, this RFP, and those who participate in it. Now we're going to draw a new RFP, but we're going to expand the services that we would like to have presented to us.
And that'll give, right, this is the chance to give us a management structured proposal that'll give these 24 other guys, if they're interested, to give us a, perhaps...
Okay, now, we can do that real quick, and you're going to get very few proposals. What we typically try to do is go out and touch base with these different companies. For example, in this particular case, we contacted 24 companies. And that takes time, and you gotta go through that extra. But if we just want to do an RFP, send it to whatever addresses we have, and put it in the newspaper, which covers our advertising part of it, then we can do that. I mean, it...
I think if you're going to do it right, you should do it the right way.
Amen.
And take, take the time that's necessary to do it the right way.
If it takes time.
Yes.
And real quick, just to put this painting thing to bed, who started painting the place? Who physically, did we hire someone to do it? Was it current staff?
I think it's current staff that was doing it.
Okay. Well, I mean, truly, there's enough paint left to finish the job, so we just finish the job.
Okay.
Thank you.
You good?
Is everybody clear on what we want to have happen?
You're going to reject these bids with the latest, last RFP, and we're going to put out another RFP that's going to include management services.
Yes.
You're going to need to have a motion and a second and a vote on that to make it official.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I second it.
Is that good enough for the record?
Now you got to vote.
Okay, roll call then.
Dr. Zidane?
No.
Colonel Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Cast as supportive one.
Okay, y'all want that?
Ten minutes?
Yeah, please.
Yes, please.
Thank you. And if y'all are going home, thank you, and happy Thanksgiving. Before, we move on to old business. This is a city council election.
And I'm sorry, Councilmember Moss, before you go down that road, remember, we're in litigation on this very subject. Later on in the meeting, I'm going to be asking you for a private meeting to discuss this issue, so...
Yeah, this is just to, I don't have any opinion on this, and this is just to direct people to sources of information, that's all. It's just, you know, a statement of fact, and that's it. Nothing, nothing coming from me. This is, by the way, this letter, there is a letter, which is on the city website, covb.org, under this matter, for this date. And the letter is from, or written by, I read, I think I read part of it on October 2nd at that meeting. It's written by an attorney, Ronald Meyer, with regard to, and you can read this yourself, I'll just read a couple of lines. This is not my statement, this is from the letter. It's regarding disqualification of Linda Hellman and Brian Hetty as council candidates.
Do we really want to do this?
So, so they can refer to that as a source of information. I won't bother to read any of it then. It's just, it's there for anybody to read. The ordinance that we voted against on October 2nd is for anybody to read. That was available, again, on the website, covb.org. You can go to October 2nd, and that had to do with the cancellation of the regular city council election. There is also information available, well, people aren't even sure what happened, but you can go to voteindianriver.com, and you can look at the results of the city election for this year. And that will show the votes that were counted, and that is by the Indian River County canvassing board. And that's it, I have nothing else to say. It's just points of, points of information.
Thank you. There are no public hearings, and we can move on.
Well, no, these, the ordinances are public hearings.
Oh, yes, you're right, sorry. We do. Okay, well, let's start, let's go to ordinances then.
Pardon me, one second. Hold, is there any way we can change the screen?
Yeah, it's driving me kind of...
Yeah, me can do it.
If you just touch it.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Where?
Actually, just turn it.
Touch it, on the bottom. Yeah.
We got it, hope.
Yeah, we got it, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. An ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, related to the budget for the city of Vero Beach, Florida, for the period beginning October 1st, 2017, and ending September 30th, 2018, providing and establishing revisions to said budget based on revised revenue expenditure and transfer estimates, providing for an effective date requested by the finance director.
What this ordinance does is reflect exactly what we spent last year and how it falls into line. And what we're doing is adopting last year's budget to conform with the way we spent the money.
All right. Any public comment on this ordinance? Roll call.
I need a motion.
Motion, motion for approval.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Dr. Zidane?
Yes.
Colonel Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Okay, two. An ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 6, Section 6-9 of the Code of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, related to prohibitions on the sale, possession, and consumption of alcoholic beverages on public property, providing clarification of permit requirements and approvals to conduct prohibited activities, providing clarification of other exceptions, providing for conflict and severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date, request to other city manager.
And speaking on behalf of the city manager...
Then this is...
This is... This basically transfers the authority to grant permits for special events, primarily in parks. Instead of each one having to come to the council, city manager will be able to sign off on them after they've been reviewed and...
And we never not approve one.
That is correct. And if I ever rejected one, they have the right to appeal to council.
Absolutely. And we did, we did do some other cleanup, since it'd been a few years since this was adopted.
I think that's fair. Public comment? Hearing none, it sounds like I had a council comment.
I was just going to make sure that we weren't increasing our liability by trusting the city manager to approve all these alcohol sales.
He's usually there to keep an eye on it.
I was going to say, you know, you guys approve it, but I have to watch over it, so...
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Dr. Zidane?
Yes.
Colonel Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Next is resolutions, public hearing. A resolution in the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, establishing a special assessment lien in the amount of $4,345 for a septic tank affluent pump step system to serve the real property located at 4507 Bethel Creek Drive, Vero Beach, Indian River County, Florida, providing for an effective date requested by the water and sewer director.
The only reason this is coming to you is because we are establishing a lien on this. Otherwise, it's done administratively where we approve the installation of step system. But this way, you guys are approving a lien being placed on the property for the payment of that cost of the step system.
Okay. Public comment? Council discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Dr. Zidane?
Yes.
Colonel Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Okay, the next is a resolution in the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, abandoning all of the city's interests in that certain utility easement described in the east two feet of the west 27 feet of tracks four and five, Section 3, Township 33, Range 39 East, lying north of the main relief canal right away. According to the plat of Indian River Farms Company Subdivision, as recorded in Plat Book 2, Page 25 of the public records of St. Lucy County, Florida, now situated in line in Indian River County, Florida, pursuant to the easement recorded December 30th, 1970 in Official Record Book 371 at Page 310 of the public records of Indian River County, Florida, authorizing the transfer of all city interests and the associated sanitary sewer force main, providing for an effective date requested by the water and sewer director.
This is actually a force main that is no longer used. It's in the street right away at 43rd. For the improvements on 43rd, the county are making those improvements and have some state grants. And so by abandoning this easement, they will remove the force main for us.
It does also include a bill of sale for the unused sewer force main, so that they can do what they want with it, in which is remove it.
Yep. And we've abandoned that force main several years ago.
Okay. Public comment? Council discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Five seconds.
Second.
Dr. Zidane?
Yes.
Colonel Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Okay, the last one is a resolution in the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, amending Section 16.3 of the personnel rules of the city of Vero Beach related to education expense reimbursement, providing for an effective date requested by the human resource director.
This was discussed during the budget and also in discussions with the police union. This is reimbursement for the police officers who take educational experience. As you remember, you put a parameters on it. Number one is a $10,000 maximum expense. The second is it conforms to Indian River State College, their fees.
Management fees.
Right. So if they want to go to Harvard, that's fine, but we're only going to reimburse up to Indian River State College fees.
Mm-hmm. Public comment? Council discussion?
Just, I thought, I read through the details on it. I thought it was extremely well organized and, you know, all of the aspects of it was pretty, you know, on target. So I thought that was done well.
Gabriel and Jason Odom do a good job on those things.
Okay, I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Dr. Zidane?
Yes.
Colonel Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Mayor Howell?
You?
Howell. Sorry.
The guy in the middle.
Guy.
Kind of late. Okay, I just have one matter, and that is about the city council meeting dates for December and January. It's usually customary for us to cancel the last council meeting date in December because of the holidays, and that would be December 18th. So I wasn't sure if council wanted to do that this year or not. And the other date would be, our regular council meeting falls on January 1st, which is New Year's Day, so I assume we're going to cancel that meeting.
No, we're going to be here.
Yeah, just, it's fine either way, but I will be unable to attend the meeting on the 3rd of December. So if we're only doing one meeting in the month, I'd like to propose perhaps pushing that more towards the middle of the month. I can be here. If not, I understand if it doesn't work with anyone else's schedule, but if we're only going to do one, then I'd like to be here if possible. I have no problem with that.
And that would be December 11th.
Okay, 11th, okay, can, we still do it at 5:00, though? That way I'm less likely to have...
I'm talking about December's meeting. So I'll be out of town on the 3rd, but could make the one on the 11th. I don't care what time it is.
Yeah, I can make, I can change my schedule as long as it's the 5:00, not the 3:00.
That's fine with me.
Does anyone else have an issue with that?
I think that's fine.
Laura?
No, I'm okay.
Okay. So that's fine.
Okay. And the only other item that I have is just to mention the openings that we still have on some of our commissioning boards. Code enforcement, we still have two alternate positions open, fire pension board, one full position open, historic preservation commission, one alternate position open, and the tree and beautification commission has one position open.
And no applications?
No, sir.
Have you asked anybody that has submitted past application?
Yeah, we had an application that was submitted at our last meeting. I asked him if he might consider being on one of the other boards, and he said no, he wants to be on the marine commission. So I told him we would just hold his application until an opening comes up.
I understand. Okay.
Can I just confirm that with the meetings? So that'll be Tuesday, December 11th, then? And I'm sorry, what time are we?
5:00.
5:00, all right. And for January, then?
Then we'll cancel our first meeting in January.
Cancel the first meeting, okay. All right, thank you.
Which means our second meeting is on what?
15th.
January 15th.
15th.
And what time would that one be then?
That one will be at 3:00.
3:00, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've been through the city manager matters, unless you have others, Jim, that have come up since we started?
Not unless you want to rehash your kids.
No, 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 I think I've hashed enough.
I actually had one thing I wanted to ask from the city managers. We had talked, we had talked over the summer about having professionally-led charrettes and, and a, someone to lead, to engage, hiring someone to engage the community to set up public meetings, to start talking about the, what the community is going to do at Three Corners. And we kind of, we had actually asked the city manager to put together an RFP related to that, but then, once the stuff got delayed with FPNL, we kind of put that on the back burner. The reason why I'm bringing up this now, it may seem like it's like a ways off, but the goal is eventually to have some type of plan on what happens at Three Corners that the community is totally bought into. And you really have to, it takes some time, and ideally is something that would happen during the time when all of our residents are here, not in the middle of the summer. And so, like, planning ahead, thinking of if we wanted to, and it has to go to referendum. And so this is something that we were talking about, maybe next November, if we have worked out the plan, what we're going to do, we want to get it on there. out the plan, what we're going to do, we want to get it on there, and that has to go to sometime over the summer to the, to the supervisor of elections. So, we really, if we wanted to take the time to actually do this right and to totally engage the community and get them involved, this may be a four to six-month process, and a part of our population is not going to be here, you know, after April or May. So, I would, I would like us to go back and, and consider putting out that RFP, knowing that we're expecting to close before the end of the year, and then if that does happen, then we can start going down this process. We will have the RFPs out there, and then we'll be able to make a decision and start working on engaging the public in what do they want to have at Three Corners.
I would imagine you'll have more than one charrette, and probably, if you want everybody to be here, probably be spring, and then, you know, the summer, you wait, and then maybe again in the fall, or something like that, or the winter. I mean, it's going to be, obviously, a long and drawn process.
That's why I'm bringing it up now, because I, I don't, I, I plan on, I want to actually work on this. I want to get something done, okay? So, I, I think that if we, if we put out an RFP relatively soon, and we get some people that are interested, then we can look and see who we want to actually run this process, because I don't think that we can do it ourselves. I think that we need someone outside to lead this, and who's professional, who's had experience in engaging, and had successful projects put together in other communities. I mean, those are the kind of criteria that, that I would hope for, for someone who would lead this. We, that's something that you can do over a six-month period, but if we don't start doing it now, we won't have it done in time to start, to voting on this next fall.
I agree, I'm a hundred percent supportive of that.
So, I guess, I, I, we had, we had already requested that you put together RFP, if I remember correctly.
We did.
So then the question is, do you, did you already do that? And if so, can we put it out?
We put the bones to an RFP. If you all recall, we sent that out. It talked about the number of, of meetings we were going to have, the parameters of time, and I think, Val, when, last time you and I talked, you wanted something a little broader than that. You wanted somebody to make a proposal to us.
I, I think that it, we kind of have an idea of what it might look like, but I don't think we're the experts on how the best way is to engage. Someone who's done this before, who, that's their job is to run these type of processes, may have an idea that's better than the more, you know, we were pretty specific, we wanted a certain number of charrettes, and a certain number of public meetings, a certain number of whatever, and I would, I would actually make it more generic in the sense that, give us your proposal of, of what we should do to actually make this a maybe our new, I had talked to our new planning director who was here earlier, and he had done something very similar in Daytona on their waterfront, and so he has a little bit of experience with that, and maybe he could help us to put together the, the RFP, but I would, I, I don't want to say, oh, let's, we'll worry about this next summer or something like that. I'd like to actually get this going so that we actually do stuff, not just talk about doing stuff.
We will put together an RFP, send it out to the council, and at one of the council meetings, you can do your own little notes on it if you wish to, and then we'll put it out.
So we'll have it at the next council meeting?
Hopefully, we'll have that at the next council meeting, yes.
Okay, that would be great, thank you.
Yep. I, I just add one, one thing to that, and it's probably for next meeting, but it'd be great if there was any way to find some private contractor that wasn't affiliated with any government entity, because what I don't want to have happen is, you know, a big pushback from the community about who we've chosen to use, and them having some affiliation with, you know, God forbid, All Board Florida, or it was the same group that, you know, I mean, I can see that going very poorly.
Right.
So, I am a hundred percent supportive of the concept.
So the RFP should include all prior government, what, all?
Well, no, we, I'll take them in, and you can eliminate them if you wish to do so.
But I would require them to list their potential conflicts, but I don't know how you describe the conflicts you're concerned about.
I, I'm not sure how to fully articulate that either, but, you know.
They'll be giving us references, and so we'll be able to go through references on that.
But if, I, I think you understand, my point is, if you recall, you know, whether it was All Board Florida, or many of the other issues we've discussed, it was these entities that had affiliation with, you know.
Whatever.
Whatever.
Marriott or something.
Sure, and it just created a lot of pushback, and that's not what we're trying to do. We want to keep it, you know, close to the vest in the community, keep the community involvement pure, and so, it'd be ideal if there was someone around here that could.
My, my biggest concern is, is slightly different, and that is that I want the entire community to be engaged in this process. I think that we tend to hear from, and I, and we hear from the people who are the most involved people in the community, but they're not necessarily reflective of the entire community, and we should hear from everybody, not just the people, and, and that's part of why I think it's important to have someone who's experienced with engaging and doing this in a professional manner, in ways that maybe we didn't think about, you know, whether it's some type of social media engagement, or things like that, where you can actually, or even surveying, that's why I think it's important to leave it more open-ended, and not tell them we want this many public meetings and this many charrettes, because they may have a better idea of how you truly engage the entire community, all the stakeholders.
And it's going to take everyone on our part, maybe it's going to the, you know, Sunset Saturday, and making an announcement, and asking for people to write down suggestions, and we're going to have to go to people to, not just expect them to show up, I think, and that's along the lines of what you're saying. What, what creative ideas can we get to get as many people involved?
Yeah. All right, so, we're on the same page there.
Right.
Great. City Attorney Matters?
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you. First item I've got, as we discussed a little bit, we do have a pending lawsuit. Trial is currently set for December seventeenth and eighteenth, and what I'd like to request is a attorney-client session with the council so that we can discuss the matters at hand. We have to discuss potential settlement, and then also strategy as it relates to, it's supposed to be limited to expenditures, and that all really boils back to potential settlement negotiations. There's been some things suggested, and we need to talk about those.
Okay, so let's set a date.
Well, you can set it, you'd have to set either a special call, and we could do it, or you could do it at your meeting, but you've just, I guess, moved that to December eleventh.
Yeah, I think, if, I don't have a problem with special call meetings, especially if we're only talking about maybe half an hour, forty-five minutes.
Is this a, is this a public meeting, or is this a?
No, it has to open in the public, we go into private, and then we have to come back to the public and adjourn.
Okay.
It's, it's council's call.
Um.
It does have to be advertised for a date and time certain, so that's why we have to set it.
Well, let's, let's do that through the run of them later.
Yeah, how about next week?
Yeah.
Yeah, or even, I mean, I love Fridays. Can we do it on Friday? Anyone available?
That'd be the thirty.
Friday is, you.
Oh, the day after Thanksgiving week, yeah.
Oh, November thirtieth would be the next Friday.
Or, or, or next Tuesday, you know, again, five o'clock, I could be available.
Well, it could, it could be any time, really, right?
Yeah, we just, we'll notice it at that time.
I mean, we could do it at, you know, five PM, six PM, whatever.
Twenty-seventh is, next Tuesday is the PSC hearing.
Yeah.
In case anyone was going up there, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there's going to be any public comment or anything, so I don't think that we're going to go to that.
Y'all want to, does anybody object to next Tuesday?
No. No, I don't object to that.
Five o'clock, that's okay with everybody.
Twenty-seventh at five?
Yes, sir.
Tuesday, twenty-seventh at five PM.
Well, I mean, is, is there a rationale? I mean, why not do it the same day as we have the city council meeting? Is there some?
That's not till December eleventh.
Not till December eleventh.
Is that jamming you?
In the seventeen.
It's not jamming me, but if we.
Well, so here's, here's the, here, the reason is that we're talking about a potential settlement issue, and if we're going to settle this, the sooner the better to get resolution to this whole election and all that, so that's the only reason why I would say the sooner the better, but.
Okay, I understand. So the twenty-seventh.
The twenty-seventh at five PM, is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Okay, great, let's load it in the calendar now.
And that'll be upstairs, I guess?
Well, we'll start here.
Huh?
We'll start here, and that's start in an open meeting, in a public meeting.
Oh, does it?
And then we'll adjourn, we'll adjourn to private after that.
Okay.
All right, okay, good.
And that gives Tammy enough time to advertise it, no?
It does.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Clinton, you have one other item?
Other item is on potential replacement in my position. Just wanted to give you an update. What, what HR has done is basically gone ahead and advertised the position, and is taking applications, and I personally didn't see a need for hiring a headhunter, which has been done in the past sometimes, but there's quite a, well, there's, there's a few, we've received applications. Did not know if the council wanted staff to review those, and maybe provide you with those that seem to be qualified, or do you want to see all applications? And then you can decide at some point on interviews.
No, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with putting the question out there and seeing what's available, but just correct me if I'm wrong, because it's been a little bit of time now. Did we or did we not hire Kira to take your place?
No, she was Peggy's request.
She was Peggy's, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And she stepped into Peggy's shoes.
From, from Jim's perspective, I mean, as a city manager, I mean, I would think it would be.
He's a charter officer, so that's totally up to the city council. He's hired in.
I know, but elsewhere in managing cities typically, does the attorney provide some kind of, you know, recommendation in, in the hiring process for suitable replacements? I mean, give us, you know, there's a half a dozen suitable replacements or not?
To answer the question, it's all over the board.
Is it?
In most places where I've been, when a charter officer, city manager, or city attorney, they're probably gone by the time a replacement's interviewed and selected.
Honestly, my hope would have been to have somebody on board before I was to leave January eleventh, but obviously, that may not happen, but, so you know, I, the rules don't allow me to change my retirement date, but I am available to stay a while longer if need be, you know.
How many, how many attorneys do we have in your absence?
In my absence, two.
And how many paralegals, I guess?
One. We have one support person.
So, can I just present a different idea? It's the same idea I've presented before. The, and that is that we had a benchmarking done, twenty-eleven, comparing other cities are similar size, and some of which were in-house, and some of which were contracted legal services, and you can have a contracted charter officer, city attorney, and, and our city manager does have experience, having worked with a contracted city attorney prior to coming to Vera Beach. And so, I, I believe that this is the perfect opportunity to do an RFP process based on the potential significant cost savings that were identified in that benchmark, and it is a little bit outdated, but it was significantly different for contracted, in, the average difference was almost three hundred thousand dollars a year, if I remember correctly, of potential savings. The, we, if we did an RFP, we could give significant preference to local attorneys. There are several other, there are other, I don't know, several, but there are other local political bodies who have contracted attorneys, like the hospital district, and so, I think an RFP process, and, and it's a, it's in general a good idea, it's a good, it's a best practices according to recent audit was done at the school board. They said that approximately every three years, you should be doing an RFP related to your legal services anyway. So, I am all in favor, and we did generate, our city attorney did give us a list of the services that are provided in, in a year, and that would be the basis, the starting point for a RFP describing what we were looking for in a contracted city attorney. So, I think there would be interest, and there would be several local attorneys that would be capable and interested in potentially applying for that job.
We voted against this last time, and if we're going to change anything, I think we'd, we have to notice it, and it should be discussed publicly, and the consensus was last time not to do that, the last time for council, purposes of council discussion.
It was a different situation, we were going to be changing our attorney, so I think it's worth revisiting.
And you might have cost savings anyway, because presumably, I mean, I don't know the, the legal field, but presumably, you know, in any job, if you end up hiring a younger person, you pay less, with all due respect, because, believe me.
Right, when I was hired, I got less than my predecessor.
Yes, that's, thank you. You're a gentleman and a scholar, thank you.
I would, you know.
So I think you'll probably see cost savings.
Quite simply, I think, Wayne, I would appreciate your recommendations on several candidates, and that's what I would like to see.
My question was, what's the volume that you've received? I mean, if it's three, then yeah, we can look at all of them, but.
We've gotten, and Gabrielle's not, I don't think sending me all of them, because if they obviously aren't qualified, they're not bothering, but, I mean, we, we got certain criteria and can certainly provide what was put in the advertisement. If we were looking for some ten years of Florida local government experience to start with, you're not going to get that in Vera Beach unless they're already working for The, the ones that we've received, we've, I've, she's probably sent me a dozen, and I haven't thoroughly vetted those ones she's sent, just haven't had the time, but glancing at them, probably less than half are qualified.
Just one other comment on the RFP process. The school board went through an RFP process and then ended up not contracting, but actually directly hiring that person. So by going through, by doing it through an RFP process, it's kind of like what we just talked about with the RENA, you then, when you're done with that process, you have the option of either contracting or directly hiring, you can make the decision at that point, and so you keep your, you keep your options open more by going through the RFP process, then you can make a decision of whether you want to hire or whether you want to contract. So, I would just strongly encourage my council members to at least keep an open mind to maybe that is the best, better solution, and.
Wayne, Wayne, how much is that workload going to decrease in your office from the sale?
Say again.
How much is the workload, do you imagine, might decrease in your office after the utility sale?
Well, the electric utility in general never provided a whole lot of work for us.
Because we always had outside counsel.
No, 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 I'm talking about before we ever started down the road of selling the electric utility.
I see.
The, the most that we would usually do for the electric was the occasional prepare an easement, or release of easement, or something like that. Obviously, there's things that come from purchasing, having to do with purchasing things for electric, but there was just, we do a percentage breakdown, and Cindy charges out to the enterprise funds, and that has always been a very, it was like one of the lowest numbers of services that we would provide, because they just didn't demand a lot of services. Now, my time, more recently, because we're getting close to closing, I have had to devote a lot of time to reviewing documents and things like that, but up into the last, say, month, I, it hasn't added a lot, but because we do have the outside counsel, and, but what I'm doing now is looking at things that they've looked at and prepared, and because obviously, our, our code also requires the city attorney to sign off on a lot of those things.
Okay.
So.
I get it, I get it.
But some, something new, too, that you can't compare the City of Vera Beach with any school board, or even cities by population, you have to look at what we do, what this city has to, that requires and demands legal services. For instance, just our police department, luckily, Stephanie is very interested in, in doing more litigation. There's new law that's, it's RPOs, or, what's RPO stand for?
This is, this is to, so, they've only had, they've only had.
Risk protection order.
Yeah, they've only had, like, three of them.
We've had three, and each one is, is a lawsuit.
Yeah.
That we have to file, you have to go to two separate, at least two hearings, and it takes a warm body to do that, and that's just one new thing that's been added. Every year, you've got something new that's added to the basket of things that we deal I don't have to defend our office at all, because we are, we have plenty to do, trust me, yeah, and, and we each have things that we primarily work on.
I'm going to go with Laura's thought process on that one. The cities that I've visited through this whole process of the sale of the utility, the cities that had a, an attorney that was hired out, it was always like, well, when can we get them here? When can they be available? And it just kind of seemed like a, a process.
Yeah, typically, your outside counsel is, you're going to have a flat rate for them to attend meetings, and then everything else is, you add it on to the bill.
Add it on.
Every time you, every time you dial them up, and that's one of the problems, staff will tell you, being able to contact, walk into my office, or any, either Stephanie or, or Kira's office, and get an answer for something is invaluable. Instead of them worrying about calling up the outside counsel and saying, oh, well, this is going to show up on the bill now.
Right.
I mean, they will tell you that, that's.
Yeah, the end result could be.
Because the city is too busy, and our staff is too busy.
It's less efficient, because you're not asking questions you should ask.
Anyway, yeah, if you'd call through those and maybe present us.
Absolutely, we can distribute those. Would you all like, like, just a package at some point? At some point, we'll have to cut off applications, obviously, so, I mean, we. some point? At some point, we'll have to cut off applications, obviously. So, I mean, we could go through the end of the month or something and see what we've got.
Give us a summary from you of, give us a recommendations based on.
What we can do is maybe, I don't know, give you a, a chart of the qual, you know, give you, give you the qualifications and show who's, who, who in the group is meeting those qualifications.
Are we going to see what we have been provided on that one attorney that was, came with recommendations that came through distribution? Or is that normal?
Yes. No. I know Jim, he's a friend, friend of mine, and he probably should know better than to do that.
Okay.
He, he doesn't even understand the process we're going through.
Okay.
And I, I told him that, you know, he probably shouldn't have done that. Should have gone to, through HR. But, and I, and I know that applicant, too, so. But she'll be in the list, in the group.
All right. Just bring us the recommendations.
Okay. We'll, we'll bring you the ones that look like they could be qualified.
Yeah, like the, what, top three, five? Like that. Whatever, whatever you think is right. Top three or five qualified. Okay. So moving on to council member matters, I just had one thing to mention in here, because I got a letter from a, we all did. We got a, more like an article from a man who I respect very much, and Mr. Charlie Pope, who I appreciate. And the, the, it was a guest column written, "Do you have $5 to restore any River Lagoon?" I just wanted to point out that it brings up some old items we talked about quite some time ago. And I'm quoting here, says, "A proposal was recently introduced to add $5, just $5, to every Vera Beach City sewage bill to build a system to treat water before it leaves our canal system and enters the lagoon. This would begin the process of removing sediment and chemicals from runoff and be a big step towards solving the problem." There's no question that anybody wants, anybody, everybody wants to solve the issues that we have with lagoon. But I just want to remind everyone that this was not a proposal for adding $5 to every bill. This was a proposal to create a stormwater utility, another branch of government, which I guess I'll have to remind everyone, they, they did that in Sebastian. And 10 years ago, it started off at $2.50 per bill. It went up to $5, then 10, then 20. So it's now at $20 in 10 years. I can only imagine that trend's going to continue. And so that's why we didn't approve that idea. I don't have a problem with $5. I have a problem with creating a new branch of government, because that's what happens in Sebastian will happen here. I also would like to see that if the money's going to be retained, it should be spent on things that we know work. So not just to say that we've done something, we put money somewhere, but we don't know if it actually creates something that's going to help. Because remember, we're only 1% of the lagoon, and it really is going to take an effort by every county in the state combined to really help our water quality situation here. And no disrespect to Charlie Pope, because I can promise you have all the respect in the world for that man. I just wanted to point that out. And that's all I want to say tonight.
And since I'm next to tag on to your point, you know, I think it's worth noting and reiterating that we have allocated the proceeds from the sale of the post office to go directly to the stormwater projects that need to be funded. And so this is a great step in the right direction to actually do some of these capital improvement projects that are going to help. So we're, we're on our way. We just need to find additional funding to keep it going in perpetuity and for maintenance.
That's a good point.
I just wanted to add that, you know, I hadn't expected to serve any bonus time on the council. And I want to thank my fellow council members and city staff. And I just want you all to know that, you know, it's, it's a pleasure and an honor to, to serve the community, and I will continue to do so as, as long as I'm needed to. So, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. And I wasn't going to let them start the meeting without you. I got you. And I want to, I want to thank everyone for voting. As you may know, we had record turnout, not only as a, as a state, but also the county. And again, you can go to voteindianriver.com for this, but it was 66% turnout. I'm talking about the county now.
How much?
And 66%. I think it's 66.2, actually. And it's not been that high for a midterm election since 1994, when it was about 70%. That was the last midterm election that was that high in terms of percentage of voter turnout. And if you like bar charts, it's fascinating. Leslie Swan has the magnificent website, voteindianriver.com. You can look up election results, and you can look at bar charts, which are amazing. I'd also like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And in dovetailing back, United Against Poverty, who spoke with us earlier, and we've decided as a council to support them in their latest endeavor. They have the Turkey Trot on Thanksgiving Day. It's very early. I think it's, I want to say 7:00 AM. You can, you can double check that. I don't want anybody to get out of bed too early, or any earlier than you have to. But I believe it's 7:00 AM. It's in Riverside Park. So that's United Against Poverty, Turkey Trot, and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Young?
I guess I want to kind of echo a little bit what Laura had to say. We are extremely fortunate that we've had the blessings in our community, that we've not had the travails of the fires in California, and our hearts go out to them. And we've not had the travails of the Panhandle with a hurricane that went up there and decimated them as well. So we've got a, a lot to be very thankful for. Yesterday, I went to the Treasure Coast Regional League of Cities meeting, and I've asked Tammy to give you, the city council, the notes that I had from there. In addition to that, they had a list of their priorities for the League of Cities that covers a waterfront, which is important. But going into the coming year, from a city perspective, some things that are on my mind, and, and Laura will get a chuckle out of one of them. And you didn't mention, what came out of the county meeting regarding the tourist tax dollars for the, for the, for the beach?
Old, old habits die hard. So I'm, I'm still pursuing, for the city, I'm still pursuing the, the tourist tax, the lifeguard stand. Jim, Jim knows about this. So, yes, I'm, I'm still pursuing it, but no, I don't.
Sunny, are you talking about the beach nourishment?
Yeah, I was, it was on the, it was on their, no, no, this was on their.
The agenda today?
On the county commission agenda this morning, at the morning meeting, not the 5:00 PM one. I know, it was a long day.
The Sector 5 is November of 19 now, just for information.
Oh, moved back? All right. I didn't know that this morning. I was giving them more credit than they deserve. But I, I am still working on that for the community to know to, and we, I won't rehash the whole thing, but we are taxing District 1, and I just want the revenues that are generated here to be applied here. That's all. And.
Did, I thought you had requested some change that would authorize expenditure for the payment.
Yes, actually, actually, thank you for reminding me. And that was Councilman Zudans, and, and I had suggested, for the community, the state, it's state statute 125.0104, that allows this, would, would allow the city to use, quotes, the tourist tax for beach park facilities, that's a direct quote, which would include a lifeguard stand. However, the county has an ordinance which does not allow for that. So the ordinance stands between the state statute and the city. And there was, the consensus of the commission was that that would remain, to be, that would continue to remain.
Okay.
Unchanged.
Yes. Thank you.
So, you know, as a concern, because I share your concern in regards to the ability for us to have input for that tourist tax, that was not, it was a common concern for all the municipalities. And so from a municipality perspective, that will be something that they will look at as well, because I think it is not a closed discussion, and I think it would be something that would be constructive for us. The other thing.
I agree. I don't consider it closed.
Yeah, we're not. The other part of it is, I raised a concern, and y'all may shudder with this. I think it's a legitimate concern regarding the rail corridor safety, because I don't personally feel that it's something that should be just ignored, because with the likely consequence of having that come through here, there should be some focus on the safety measures beyond just the crossing points. And they agreed with that as well. So that's there. I just want to pass along to our fellow public servants, I had the great benefit for the campaign season, to really get to know a little bit more of some of the other cam, those that were campaigning. And I just want to extend my congratulations to Aaron Graul, and Nicole Metz, Tommy Lauder, the school board. I know we missed out on their appointment tonight with Dr. Schiff, and Rosario, and Berenberg. But for those that are watching on television, I will share with you, I wish the cameras from the United States were out in front of the main library, because unlike elsewhere, the conduct of all of the candidates was commendable. I mean, it didn't matter whether you were, you know, Republican, Democrat, non-denominational, whatever. We all got along and shared coffee, shared pizza. And I thought that that commonality is something that is, is something that we should be proud of. And, you know, I would just say, I think it's meaningful for anybody to step forward to run for public office. And no matter what the vote count is, the fact that you have the, whatever you want to call intestinal fortitude and grit to do it is something that should be applauded. I just want to say thanks to Jim and your department. I saw the pavilion going up over at Riverside Park, and man, that looks awesome.
Yes.
And I think that'll be done in the next couple of weeks, probably.
Should be the next couple of weeks. And the Downey family is aware of it being done.
Yeah, it's phenomenal. Also, went out on the Capola Pier, and that's, that's incredible. And I understand that the Capolas are helping with the other pier over by Royal Palm Point.
That is correct.
So that's, that's outstanding.
And I think you can buy planks, if you want to buy a plank in memory on, I think they probably have all sold on the fishing pier, but on the Royal Palm Point pier, I think they're going to be putting planks up there, too.
At the grand opening, they said they still had a few at the fishing pier, but yes, they are going to be putting planks over at the other.
It's a, it's a good way to memorialize someone you love.
And then also, in my excursions around town, the Memorial Island Walkway is being acid washed and pressure washed and improved. And so that was a nice surprise, and I'd say thank you for that. Also, in the course of tonight's meeting, we missed out one opportunity in the supporting documentation, the conservative financial management of the city, as well as the tenacity of Cindy Lawson to, to obtain funds from the hurricane, what's the agency that?
FEMA.
FEMA has paid off. And so I just want to say hallelujah. Thank you, Cindy, for, for that.
They still owe us money.
Oh, I know, I know. But, but we're making, we're moving in the right direction. And so that's incredible.
Bird in hand.
It's easier than the tourist tax, let me tell you, Jim.
But we did have some FEMA money in hand once before, and they came and took it back.
And, and I would be.
There are strings attached.
I would be remiss without telling everybody that came through in November for celebration of the centennial, wow. Because the public needs to realize that we got the snowball rolling, and the, the support from the community across the board. I mean, the blessing of the fleet that was there on, on the river, the bonfire out on the, out on the ocean, just across the board. It's been pretty amazing. And I would just recommend everybody who hasn't done so, go to verabeach100.org, because December will continue the, the progress. And finally, to Cheryl Benak and Countryside Citrus, I may get in trouble for highlighting you, but the Benak family were very generous to the, to the city in donating to help as a result of their corn mase. Thank you. That's all I got.
That was a lot of stuff. So a couple of things. On the 100, my office, Florida Institute, is sponsoring a photo contest, is kind of like visual thing. So there's like, I think there's a monthly prize, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
And you can go and submit, and it's supposed to be things related to the centennial. So like, if you're at an event, take a picture, submit it, and you may win a prize. And then I think there's a big grand prize at the end, all sponsored by Florida Institute. And the bonfire was awesome. The weather got just perfect for it. So it was like a little bit cool, you know? And it was great to walk all along the beach there, and from bonfire to bonfire, each of the places had nice stuff set up. And I ran into a lot of people who I hadn't seen in a while, and so that was cool. And I think that that we should do every year. That, that was, yeah.
Yeah.
What's wrong with, other than sending the fire truck out there, which was parked at the end of the, there's really, it's all done by the hotels, right?
The establishments think they should do it every month.
Yeah, they should. In the, in the season, I think it's, it's probably a great idea. And I think that makes our town very, it's a very charming thing to do for our town, to have beach bonfires, especially when the weather gets cold. And I think we should make it a tradition. And we started it. It took us a hundred years to figure that one out, but we started it.
We were doing that back, yeah, but four years ago.
This is a little bit more Philly. I think they had little mini lobster rolls at, at Vera Beach Hotel, and it was great. That was, that went off very well. And I want to say congratulations to everyone who did very well. And congratulations, Laura, to get in the top votes. And, and I just heard that Laura Zork was elected the school board chair, so she's going to be doing that. But everyone did a great job, and I thought that everyone handled themselves very professionally as well. I didn't see any, we have seen some negative stuff sometimes in campaigns. There was, there was almost zero person, I saw like one or two personal things, but it was very, very limited. That was great.
I would, I would agree with that. I was there, and I would agree. It was, it went very, very well.
And then, just, my, I don't have a personal thing, but I just, like, over the next year, I'd love to see us, I'm not going to forget about the parking. And I'm not like locked into any, any particular idea. I just look in for a solution. And I've even heard some additional things since the last meeting, some additional ideas. And, and the, one of the ideas is along the lines of trying to get some matching funds through bed tax dollars. I've even talked to, there is some openness to the idea. So that's something that we should go down the path. I, I also, and since the last, I think it was since the last meeting, that they got the final term sheet for the Dodger Town. And I'd love to see some kind of solution happen at Dodger Town that allowed a win-win for everybody. And I mean, for the Major League Baseball, for the county, for the city, where we can potentially somehow get something on the tax rolls, at the same time, we can meet the needs that the county has for parking and Major League Baseball needs, and have a comprehensive solution by getting all those people together. And then my last thing that I really want to see happen, the most important thing for this next year, is the Three Corners, and getting the community really on the same page, bought into an idea that is popular enough that it's going to pass by a large margin when it go, if it goes to referendum next November. And that, that's going to be like a big task, because there are lots of different competing ideas. And I'd love to see really high engagement over the next year, and see something come out of that process that really changes our city for the next 100 years. Because 35 acres, between those two properties, 35 acres of waterfront property will, whatever happens there will affect the future of this city. And so we have a big task over the next year.
I think, I think it was good, by the way, that you mentioned it tonight, because it is really important, and it is coming up faster than we think.
And we need.
Thank you for.
We shouldn't rush it, but if we start now, we have, you know, enough time to really go through that thoroughly.
Yes.
Colonel Young, anything else?
That's more than I have ever said in any of these.
You did pretty well.
Note, take note, okay?
Were you finished?
Oh, yeah.
Great. All right. Well, meeting's adjourned. Great, all right, well, meeting's adjourned.